Special meeting of the Concord City Council is now in session. Madam Clerk, will you please kindly take the roll call?
Councilmember Aliano.
Here.
Councilmember Hoffmeister.
Here.
Councilmember Nakamura.
I am here.
Vice Mayor Oberinger.
Here.
And Mayor Bersan.
Here. We will now rise and Vice Mayor Oberinger will lead us in the pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Please be seated. As this is a special meeting of the City Council and not one of our regular meetings, under our protocols of the Brown Act, et cetera, we do not have public comment for items not on the agenda. However, at the end of the meeting, when it is adjourned, I will be out there and anyone who wants to yak at me is more than welcome to, we'll sit down and talk. With that, we now have a report on the City Council sitting as a local reuse authority, alias known as LRA, to go over the term sheet for the base. Mr. Guy, take it away.
Mr. Mayor and members of council, tonight we are considering Brookfield's term sheet and a proposed First Amendment to our exclusive negotiating agreement with Brookfield. Tonight, I'm going to make a presentation, then Brookfield will make a presentation, and then based on that information, we'll ask council if there are any questions that you have of each or any of us. Then we'll move to public comment, and then after public comment, we'll bring the matter back for council consideration. Before we move on, I want to first make council aware that we do have three other members of what I call the LRA team here in the audience with us. Joan Ryan, our community reuse planner is in the second row here, and then Mary Smithram Sheldon, who is with ALH Economics, and one of our financial advisors is here, and then Jerry Remesa with Burke William Sorenson, who is an outside counsel and one of the helpers in the formulation of the term sheet along with Brookfield's counsel. So they're here to answer questions that I can't field and/or I start to get too deep into the woods, they'll bring me back out, right? So I've gone over this evening's agenda order, but I wanted to remind you that we're not just talking about the term sheet tonight, we're also talking about the proposed First Amendment to the exclusive negotiating agreement. So those are both in the packet for your review. So as part of tonight's staff presentation, I'm going to talk a little bit about the project history. I'm going to explain a little bit about what a term sheet is and what comes after the acceptance of the term sheet. I'm then going to highlight for you what LRA staff sees as the highlights of the Brookfield term sheet. I'm sure Brookfield in their presentation will also explain the highlights of their term sheet. I'm then going to highlight what I see or what we see as the local reuse authority city protections within the document, and then remind you of what actions, choices you have this evening. So I think most people are aware, we've been at this for quite some time. The base was closed and bracked, which means it went through the Base Realignment and Closure Commission and was approved by Congress in 2006. Between 2007 and 2009, we did extensive community and regional outreach because we wanted to make sure that the community's preferences were known ahead of decisions about how the property might be conveyed and to whom it might be conveyed. In 2010, we adopted a reuse plan to make the Navy happy, they wanted a document, and in that plan, we chose the clustered villages options of about seven or eight options, and with that plan, we did a full environmental impact report. In 2012, after reviewing the reuse plan and determining that we needed to make sure that the reuse plan also was in our general plan and therefore compliant with California law and planning law, we adopted the area plan with minor amendments to the environmental impact report. And so the area plan for the base in 2012 is the official document in the city's general plan. Between 2014 and 2016, we went through a rather extensive and laborious master developer selection process, 12 to 8 to 4 to 3 to 2 to 1, and we ended up with Lennar Five Point as the master developer. We entered into an exclusive negotiation agreement with them, we entered into a term sheet with them in May of 2016, and then we began the drafting of a specific plan, and in the middle of the drafting of that specific plan, an issue between Lennar, the LRA, and frankly, the building trades came to a head, and in March 2020, Lennar Five Point walked away from the project and the E&amp;A expired. In 2012, we spent most of 2012, thank you, 2020, we spent most of, I'm progressing, in 2020, we spent most of that year discussing the project with developers and stakeholders to ask them what they thought project's success factors looked like. In 2021, we came to council with a new RFQ, a streamlined request for qualifications, and it required that the applicants have a project labor agreement or be willing to enter into one, and it also put the entire economic development conveyance property, all 2,300 acres, into the project and into the proposal. With that, council selected a developer, an exclusive negotiation agreement was adopted, and we entered into term sheet negotiations for most of 2022, and we came to council in January of 2023 with a term sheet. At that point, council had two meetings to discuss the term sheet and ultimately rejected the term sheet 3 to 2. So at that point, that master developer's exclusive agreement to negotiate expired on January 31st of last year. Shortly thereafter, we started moving even faster to find a third master developer, and so in May of 2023, we issued a new request for qualifications, and in August 26th of 2023, we selected Brookfield as the master developer. And moving even quicker, in September of 19, the LRA and Brookfield entered into an E&amp;A exclusive negotiating agreement to negotiate our term sheet. We've been negotiating the term sheet since then. On February 15, we issued the term sheet and First Amendment to the E&amp;A for public consideration, to you, the council, and to the public. Brookfield has done extensive community outreach, and when we issued the term sheet, Brookfield requested a 30-day continuance to allow for additional community review before bringing the matter to you on March 19, which is today. The differences between the documents before you tonight and those issued on February 15 are two. One, we fixed the table of contents and added a defined terms glossary to the term sheet. Secondly, we corrected dates in both the staff report and the First Amendment to the exclusive agreement to negotiate to reflect the impact of postponing council's consideration to tonight. So now let's talk a little bit about what is a term sheet. These four bullets create sort of the definition. A term sheet is an outline of the potential future contract between the LRA and the master developer. It's a framework to be further negotiated into the future disposition and development agreement and the specific plan. It is based on a conceptual land use plan with types of development, infrastructure, and public facilities, and you'll see that in Exhibit A, and it's based on a conceptual financial plan demonstrating estimated revenues and costs of that conceptual project. You'll see a summary of that in Exhibit B. All of those things have been met in this term sheet, and now I want to show you what comes next, should you accept the term sheet. This is complicated, but it's not in some respects. There are a couple errors because I got lazy and I didn't update this into March, but effectively, the E&amp;A was adopted on the, on the, is it your right-hand side, left? Thank you. In September 2023, the E&amp;A was agreed to. We've then actually gone 193 days, or we've, the city manager has extended what we call this preliminary stage to 193 days or till March 30, 2023, for us to negotiate the term sheet. In March of 2024, we are now discussing the term sheet, which is based on a land use plan and based on a financial pro forma. If you accept the term sheet this evening, we will move from the preliminary stage to the DDA stage, the disposition development agreement stage of the exclusive negotiating agreement, which, under the terms of the amendment, could be up to 48 months. And in that 48 months, Brookfield will start by negotiating the terms, price, and payment of the economic development conveyance agreement regarding the property transfer from the United States Navy to the city of Concord with LRA and city council direction. Brookfield will then prepare a specific plan for the project, analyze and address impacts of the proposed development in an environmental impact report, prepare a fiscal impact report, prepare required amendments to the Concord reuse project area plan, general plan, and development codes, and formalize the terms of the disposition and development agreement or development agreements. These DDA stage documents will all be subject to future public consideration and approval by the LRA city council within the next 36 months, 36 to 48 months. And you can see what I'm talking about and what I just listed is on the right-hand side of this slide, and you see that the EIR will effectively clear those other actions. In other words, we need to adopt the EIR before adopting those other actions, and those other actions will have cost implications to the pro forma and ultimately to our agreement with the Navy. Now I'd like to go through some of the Brookfield term sheet highlights for your benefit. First of all, the goal is to meet community expectations while ensuring the financial feasibility of the project. That has always been the goal of this project, that it continues to be the goal of this project. One, all of approximately 2,300 acres of the economic development conveyance in five phases over 40 years, so the term sheet covers all of that. Two, the land use plan is consistent with the adopted area plans, 12,272 residential units, including the 25% affordable housing goal, which is roughly a little over 3,000 units of those 12,000. Approximately 6 million square feet of commercial space estimated to allow the creation of up to 16,356 jobs. There is also a tournament sports park, campus district, and 886 acres of parks, greenways, and the phased restoration of Mount Diablo Creek. Brookfield is proposing, as I said, to do the project in five phases over the next 40 years. This is a conceptual preliminary land use plan with phasing, and I think you can, you understand, this is Willow Pass Road, cutting through the project. This is Highway 4, between the golf course, the admin area, and the rest of the project. This is Bailey Road, I'm not used to the wide one here, this is Bailey Road. So I wanted to orient everyone to the map and how to look at it. They have organized the phases so that each one achieves an unlevered internal rate of return of at least 18%, and the city will participate in profits when they exceed 18%. Brookfield will likely undertake the horizontal infrastructure under a right-of-entry approach where the city retains ownership of property until it is sold to vertical developers or builders. Brookfield and the LRA are in discussions with BART about whether they wish to be included in the specific plan. Oh, sorry. So the BART property is roughly 18 to 20 acres in this location, and then right below that is the Coast Guard, or the former Navy housing now called the Coast Guard Housing. The Coast Guard property is now in private ownership that is seeking entitlements from the city. Number five, the entire project is subject to a project labor agreement with the Contra Costa Building and Construction Trades and the NorCal Carpenters Union. Six, pads and infrastructure for the 3,068 units of affordable housing will be provided at an estimated cost of $146 million, and an additional $50 million contribution is being made by the project Brookfield to affordable housing projects. Item seven, the legally binding agreements or the legally binding agreement parcels, one for a food bank of 10 acres and permanent supportive housing of 16 acres spread throughout the project. And item eight, a four-acre parcel for a future veterans hall in Phase 1. Additionally, there is $165 million project contribution towards a library, community center, a $100 million project contribution towards the tournament sports complex city park, widening of Willow Pass Road to four lanes in phases with removal of Kinney Bridge in Phase 1, an extension of Ivora Road from Kinney Boulevard to Port Chicago Highway, and golf course repair in Phase 1. Two $10 million project contributions.
Guy, we have a.
Sorry to interrupt. You said 165 million, or is it 65 million with number nine?
I'm sorry. If I said 165, I apologize. It's 65.
Okay.
Thank you. The slide is correct. I was merging nine and 10. So item 13, there are two $10 million project contributions for the construction of a fire station, one in Phase 2 and another in Phase 4. There is also contribution of 55 acres for school sites in Phases 2 through 5. In item 15, there is expedited repayment of city loans to the project in Phases 1 and 2. 16, Brookfield is acceptance, Brookfield is accepting an internal rate of return of 18%, and the city will participate in project returns greater than 18%. As you can see there, the city's share would be 40% on returns between 18 and 20%, and then the city's share would be 50% on returns 20% or greater. And within the financial or conceptual pro forma or financial plan, Brookfield has provided for estimated payments to the Navy, which are effectively subject to our subsequent or future negotiations with the Navy. Once we have a plan for what we would like to offer the Navy, we will come to council for approval of that proposed payment to Navy before we offer or take it to Navy per normal practice. Now I'd like to just hit on a few of the city protections I see within the term sheet, and again, this is not an exhaustive review of the term sheet, but just the highlights and some of the highlights regarding protections. So the horizontal infrastructure is to be installed in subphases, and you'll notice when you look at the phasing map in Exhibit A, Phase 1 has three subphases, and that will be done through, effectively through right-of-entry after Brookfield provides evidence of capability and bonds to ensure performance. Brookfield has also agreed to schedule the performance milestones to ensure the phased delivery of backbone infrastructure within certain time limits. Brookfield is acting as master developer. That means they're responsible for backbone infrastructure and public amenities. Brookfield has agreed that the sale of land to affiliated builders, meaning builders that are part of the Brookfield family of companies, must be at a residual land value formula reviewed and approved by the LRA in the future disposition development agreement. Sales to non-affiliated builders will be done at market rate as the market will bear. Brookfield also agrees to an open book accounting between Brookfield and the LRA. The LRA will have inspection and audit rights, and an annual report will be issued to the city council and the public detailing how the project is progressing. And changes in control of the project to a non-B Brookfield entity requires LRA consent. So there are three alternative actions before you this evening, once you've heard from Brookfield and taken public comment. One, to choose to approve the term sheet as drafted, which is obviously staff's recommendation, or two, provide additional direction to LRA staff in Brookfield regarding additional or changed provisions for consideration in the term sheet. That would require you to continue this meeting to a date certain and likely need to extend the preliminary stage negotiation period beyond the current March 30 deadline. Or lastly, you could reject this term sheet and direct staff to let the exclusive negotiation agreement with Brookfield expire on March 30. So that's staff's presentation. It's now appropriate to let Brookfield make their presentation, and then, Mr. Mayor, it'd be appropriate for council questions.
Who's making the presentation?
I assume Josh Roden, the president of Brookfield, is going to kick it off.
Please.
And his PowerPoint will be up there in just, right now.
Thank you, Guy.
You can also bring that down if you want.
I forget he's so tall. He's too tall.
Here you go.
Good evening, Mayor, Vice Mayor, council members. My name is Josh Roden with Brookfield Properties Development. I'm excited to be here and asked for your consideration and approval for the term sheet this evening. I'll walk through a few slides, and then I'm going to hand it over to Barry Long, who will walk through the development of our conceptual land use plan, and then to Emily Boyd with our Brookfield team to walk through our community engagement plan, assuming we get through our term sheet tonight. So starting off, I'd like to thank the community of Concord, a number of residents that we've been able to engage with, a lot of the stakeholders, some of which council members have introduced us to. It's been a very enjoyable process so far. We've been meeting with a number of groups for the past six months, sometimes two, three, four times with the same group, and we've gotten a lot of really good insights, and we've learned a lot ourselves about the community of Concord. And so a lot of what we're going to be sharing tonight is reflective of some of that insights that's helped form our plan, and we anticipate that will continue on as we get into the specific plan process and continue our community outreach. So thank you all for the time that's been put into this so far. Thank you to Guy and the staff. It's been a pleasure so far working with them. I believe the collaboration between our teams has provided a very solid and sound term sheet. One of the key components of it that I want to be able to touch on is the financial feasibility component of it. By no means is a project of this size easy to put that in the terms of numbers. That puts it in a position for a development group to feel comfortable moving forward and investing in something like this. So thank you, guys. So there is, there's a lot of planning and infrastructure that will be put in place here, and we're contemplating doing that in five phases. And that will achieve a lot of the community goals envisioned that we've experienced so far, and we've heard from the groups, but that all requires us to do that in a way where we can make it financially feasible, and we want to be careful about the economic cycles and that this development can continue to be developed through economic cycles. And so one of the ways in our strategies of doing this is ensuring that, and Guy mentioned this, ensuring that each phase can stand alone from a financial perspective and it has cash flow positive from an underwriting perspective today. So that's a foundational element in how we're looking at the overall plan, the phasing plan, how and when we're doing community benefits, infrastructure. And so I'll walk through a few highlights on things that might be a little bit different than what you've seen in past plans, but the ultimate goal is trying to make it financially sound so that we don't have fits and starts and this thing can cruise. So a few of those are Willow Pass Road is a great example. We're breaking that down into three phases of construction, more or less within the phases of development that we have. So Phase 1, Willow Pass Road construction component that's within Phase 1, which includes the new bridge construction, and then the remaining two phases and the phases that are adjacent to Willow Pass Road, which is Phase 2 and Phase 4. Ivora Road, which is on the north side of Highway 4, we're going to break into two pieces, the first one in Phase 1 and the second one in Phase 3. We've got the affordable housing subsidies. We would love to do more sooner, but we've got them at $5 million in the Phase 1, $5 million in Phase 2, 10 in Phase 3, 15 in Phase 4, and 15 in Phase 5. And then we have the recycled water system. So in each phase, as we build it, starting with Phase 1, we will install the recycled water infrastructure within that phase. It's a roughly $30 to $40 million today cost to go nearly the four miles to Central Sand and also build the holding tanks that create the pressure for the system up in the hills. And that cost just can't be borne in Phases 1, 2, and 3, and so that's currently planned in Phase 4. There is the opportunity, and we'll be working with Central Sand, the city, and look for outside funding to be able to pull something like that in sooner. Mount Diablo Creek restoration, that's being phased along with the phases as they're developed. So all of this really is targeted at, as I mentioned, the financial feasibility each phase, but also we've heard loud and clear the community benefits that were identified a while ago and have stayed consistent even with the discussions we've had with the community. We wanted to keep those in there in total, so we've had to manage where does all that happen and when. So that's where we've gotten to today. Another item that I thought is worth talking about, Guy had mentioned it a little bit. So our E&amp;A extension is a three-to-four-year period, and so this is from approval tonight, assuming we get approved, it's three years, and it could go up to a maximum of four years from the date, that's two years from a Navy term sheet EDC application. So if we get the Navy term sheet and EDC application within the year, within the next year, then it would be a three-year period. If it takes us 18 months to get that, then it's three and a half years. If it takes us three years to get there, then we're timed out and we'll be coming back at some point for an amendment. We are confident that it won't take that long, but it's a serious and significant investment of time and money by Brookfield to be investing in this entitlement and the path. We're covering the city's costs, city's consultants, our consultants, our costs, and so we don't want to be timed out. And for us to be comfortable in making that investment, we have to have enough time that gets us comfortable that we can get there. It's in our best interest to move as fast as we can. We develop, we build communities, that's what we do. We want to be doing that sooner rather than later. The other piece of it is an entitlement fee of three times the entitlement cost, so we're going to be investing this time and money over the next three years. If we don't get there, we don't get anything. We don't get our money back. So we are requesting in the term sheet that we earn a 3X on that money, and what that does do is it helps align us with the city as well to manage our budgets and then also get to the end game sooner rather than later. The first milestone being the DDA, specific plan, EIR, and approvals. And at that point. And at that point, that's a huge milestone, and then we're on to development. That fee does not get paid unless we develop the property and the project generates revenues. So it's paid by the project. So that means we have to go invest $200 million plus to develop the property, sell off land that's been developed, to be able to get the revenue to pay that. So that's another huge milestone. In large master plans, oftentimes that first phase and just starting development is one of the biggest hurdles as well. So I think that gives us good alignment, gives us an incentive to stay focused on getting to those major milestones and get this thing out of the ground. Wrong way. So I think Guy touched on all these, so I'll jump over these. These are major components, obviously, to the overall framework of the program and plan. The other significant piece here is the dollar amounts. So we've talked through, Guy mentioned, the campus district, school sites, the food bank, the permanent supportive housing, the veterans hall. We also have a half a billion dollars of contributions that go towards the tournament sports parks, civic center, library, fire stations, and affordable housing subsidy. There's also $1.7 billion planned investment in the infrastructure and environmental remediation for the project site, and $336 million dedicated to habitat mitigation and Mount Diablo Creek restoration. So it's a, these are great, nice, big numbers, and they do and will provide an exceptional new development and community for the city. So now I would like to hand it over to Barry, who will talk through the development of the plan that shows where all these pieces are going in.
And good evening, Mayor and Vice Mayor and council members. It's nice to see you again. As Josh said, I'm Barry Long, principal with Urban Design Associates, working in support of Brookfield and the city on the planning. So this evening, I'm going to walk you through the land use plan associated with the term sheet and the attachments to the term sheet, and we look forward to working with you. I'm going to do the same thing Josh did. It's the big button, of course, but it was the top button. Working with you to build a place that enhances the identity of Concord. We really look forward to getting deep into the planning and looking at all the pretty pictures. That's when I love to, not really get in deep to the place making, that's not what tonight's presentation is about. Tonight's a technical meeting, and it's an important first step. So we, as a team, carefully study the past work to identify considerations for existing and planned site conditions that affect the land planning and developable area. You know, we did not start over. We maintain the critical elements of the project commitments and policies from the CRP plan, the EIR, the RFP, which, you know, we were here responding to in August, including the Mount Diablo Creek restoration, wetland preservation, and the creation of new wetlands, the Green Frame, and the Ridgeway Park. And we reserved land for necessary infrastructure components such as stormwater management, creek crossing locations, the existing oil pipelines and their required setbacks, and the CCWD canal. So there are a lot of constraints. Many of these constraints are also opportunities, but this is our baseline. We established a framework for the key infrastructure necessary to provide circulation and utility service throughout the project site, which we call the backbone infrastructure. So the backbone corridors have been coordinated with the proposed phasing, ensuring that access and capacity for future phases is provided. And this framework has been planned to provide corridors for connectivity for all modes of transit linking from the TOD district and the BART areas to Willow Pass Road, and then eventually down to Bailey Road. As we discussed in the November hearing, the site contours lend themselves to three different, we called them grid patterns, but grid orientations, and the light guidelines are run parallel with and perpendicular to those slopes, which is optimal if we can orient development in the same direction, not in this rigorous a grid, but this type of orientation. So based on that realization, we received direction from all of you from council in November to move forward with rotating the campus district, which we did. It's highlighted here in blue. So rotating the campus allowed it to be closer to BART, work better with that topography and the land form, and actually it had the additional benefit of being able to connect it directly to the innovation district where, before, there was actually a gap. This exhibit combines proposed conservation areas, greenways, citywide parks, and other parks, and open space, and the community facilities. The open space network is the foundation of the land use plan, and we really love that idea. I think it has been from the beginning of your planning, and it still is. Proposed community facilities still include, as was mentioned, library and community center, four school sites, an onsite fire station and a fire station north of Highway Four, and three potential police substations, and all those are labeled in your packet. In November, we got a question or a concern, I think at first it came from the audience, but it was reiterated by council about the park distribution. Was it equitable in terms of, I think that night it was referred to as above and below Willow Pass, but northwest of Willow Pass versus southeast of Willow Pass? So we did some measuring in the interim, and what we found is that about 47% of the mixed-use phases with housing in them are on the northwest side of Willow Pass, and about 46% of the active green space, greenways, parks, and open spaces. And then on the other side of Willow Pass, 53% of mixed-use phases with housing and 54% of active greenways, parks, and open space. And we know this doesn't correspond exactly to your districts. We know that District One and Two, there's an overlap over Willow Pass, but that night we were asked about Willow Pass. And I think the follow-up question to us would have been, what about population distribution, not just parks? So we did look at the number and population distribution because the perception is that that TOD area is going to drive a lot of additional density, so a lot more residents. But interestingly enough, what we found is that population distribution is within a percentage point of these numbers as projected. And the reason is, we believe you have so many mixed-use elements on the, we'll call it the northwest side of Willow Pass, that it a little bit dilutes the population, so you have a lot more density, or you have more density, which actually don't have a significant number of additional residents. So those are our preliminary findings and the answer to that question. This and the following two exhibits are attachments to the term sheet. So phasing follows land transfer, as it does on all BRAC projects. Phase One, as was mentioned, gets the TOD district underway and finishes the center section of Willow Pass, as Josh said, but it also provides for some improvements all the way along Willow Pass, which are just going to be necessary with phases of this size. But the balance of Willow Pass will go with the associated phases. The conceptual preliminary land use plan, Guy pulled this up earlier, and in his highlights it was important the word conceptual has a capital C. We have a long way to go together. But it is a conceptual plan, and it has had a lot of love and care put into it, I will say. But parks and open space act as the foundation of all neighborhoods, and that is the underpinning, as we mentioned before. Many modes of transportation are envisioned and are being thought about, even though we're at this very conceptual level. The dense mixed-use TOD district between BART and the campus has been preserved, and retail in that area can help address the lack of neighborhood retail in North Concord, especially a grocery store. The TOD district will be complemented by neighborhood commercial centers along Willow Pass and between the Green Frame and Creek Corridor, and taken together, these three commercial hubs will form the nucleus of activity within the neighborhoods. And they're going to be complemented by this green framework that connects everything together, which is the other primary point of activation. So really, the whole plan is stitched together in an activated way, which we're really excited about. The amount and general location of commercial is consistent with previous plans, and the overall buildable area is also consistent with previous plans. And detail will be added to the CRP vision when we do the specific plan, but this land use is a first step, and we're very excited about the direction and where it is today. This exhibit was shown earlier. It is part of the term sheet. So it overlays the land use plan with the phasing, and it's included for reference. It got to be so busy, we like using the land use planner, looking at it without the phasing on top, but there's a lot of important information in this drawing, too. This view is rotated and tipped to present the land use plan in context with adjacent neighborhoods in downtown. And we like this exhibit because it reminds us that the redevelopment of the Naval Weapons Station is an extension of the city fabric. It's not an island, that's how we think about it. I think that's how you think about it. And it's actually a really nice connection between Thurgood Marshall Regional Park and the city today, and will be as it's built out over time. And then this is a detailed plan for the TOD district. We've zoomed in. Unfortunately, in the time since November, I've had an opportunity to drive down in there and get lost a number of times because, quite honestly, connectivity is challenging, I think partly because of the BART line and how it limits access to the neighborhoods along Port Chicago. But anyway, you can see more clearly the land use is proposed in relationship to BART, the former Coast Guard site, and our neighbors and neighborhoods in North Concord. There was a lot of discussion of this area in the last meeting, and we wanted to be prepared, so we included this exhibit for discussion tonight if necessary. And with that, I'd like to introduce Emily Boyd, who did bring a laser pointer tonight. So this time, if you do have questions or want us to point things out, we will. I like Guy's laser pointer better. We have a traditional one, but Emily.
Thank you, Barry. Good evening, council, vice mayor, mayor, staff, and community members. Since our project overview in November, we have continued our outreach and to collect our community feedback across the entire Concord community. And to be honest, the asks really haven't changed that much. And while the community is still eager for the project to get underway, they have appreciated the opportunity for the extra time to digest what we're presenting here this evening and to have more open dialogue. Going forward, we'll continue to gather input as part of our planning process while refining and updating the vision. We're anxiously anticipating the next planning and zoning phase and bringing the area plan to life. This plan includes designing the layout, uses and features of development, and in this phase, we'll get to focus even more on actionable community engagement. These interactions will inform the specific plan, which provides detailed guidance for how the project will look and feel, and outlines project components like public spaces, transit, and community facilities. This is our current community engagement timeline, and we continue to fine-tune this project's schedule and incorporate the feedback that we're hearing from you and the community. The schedule focuses now on infrastructure and phasing following the potential approval of the term sheet, which ensures that we're building an effective and sustainable framework for the specific plan, while also taking the necessary time to receive input from the stakeholders in the community. As you can see, there'll be a variety of ways to engage, including virtual meetings, as requested at the last meeting by Councilmember Hofmeister, public events, open houses, workshops, and of course, by phone and email, as everyone's gotten comfortable reaching out. In 2024, we'll remain focused on proactively engaging the community and receiving feedback and sharing project updates. We'll also get to start hosting open houses and focused workshops on project components such as affordable housing, open spaces, trails, parks, sports fields, connectivity, and how to promote the current Concord businesses and attract new uses. Our team prides itself on being approachable and responsive. Josh and I have personally gotten to engage with many of you and thoroughly enjoyed getting to know more about you and this vibrant community. We look forward to brainstorming even more great ways for this project to enhance the identity of Concord with you this year and for many years to come. Now I'll hand it back over to Josh to conclude our presentation and take your questions.
Thank you, Emily. Thanks, Barry. So we're ready to get started. I know the community engagement part of it has really provided a lot of energy for us, and we're excited to be able to come back to you as we go through a council-led specific plan process. So as we get steps down the road, we look forward to be back in front of you and be able to share some of the findings we have. And ideally, we're able to get through and work through our Navy deal with the city as soon as possible. So we're here for any questions, and thank you very much.
Okay. Guy, do you have any final comments?
No, thank you, Mr. Mayor. I think at this point, you've heard from staff, you've heard from Brookfield, it's time for you to have any questions you might have of our teams before you hear public comment.
Now I remind us, and I remind myself, this is for questions only on the presentation.
Correct.
With that, I have Vice Mayor Obringer.
Thank you. So thank you for your presentation. And so, Josh, I do have several questions for you. So I'll start off at the bottom of page four of the term sheet. It talks about, there's a paragraph that talks about to accelerate delivery of affordable units, et cetera, et cetera. Developer shall have the right to reallocate affordable units between phases. And so I wanted to learn more about what your plans are there. As I did see in part of Emily's presentation, the community sentiment continues to be the desire to integrate affordable housing throughout the project. And so when I read this, this seemed like there might be some intention to, and I know it gets complicated because the state thinks that everybody who wants to live an affordable unit also wants to live next to BART, which is not necessarily true. And we're also dealing with our housing element now, where we're being told that in the parts of town that are not close to public transit, where we have more affluent people, now we have to build affordable housing, even though there's no bus line or anything going there. So I know you're in a complicated situation, but I want to understand your intentions so we don't end up with all the affordable concentrated in one place.
Yes. So currently in both the plan, so as we've laid out the plan and uses throughout the plan, and in the financial model, 25% of the affordable is in each phase. So each phase has 25% affordable. And so we have that language in the term sheet because one of the things with affordable housing and being able to benefit from the different sources of funds that can help subsidize affordable housing, whether it's tax, credit financing, grants, programs like that, there's oftentimes a checklist and criteria to be able to tap into those funds. And it can be such things as transportation, it can be BART, but it also could be bus stops that have a certain frequency of stops by the bus line, access to schools, retail. So all those components feed into it. So as we're developing and implementing the plan, to make sure we're able to capitalize on those things, we want to be able to move units around to some extent to be able to make sure that we can do that and provide affordable housing at a reasonable cost.
Okay, thank you. Moving on to Exhibit B, so I see that looks like $919.2 million is allocated for the backbone infrastructure. So there's not a lot of detail provided for us. So could you share with us, I know you've mentioned a lot of, you know, investment the Brookfield's going to be putting up front, so how much of that is private and how much of that is contemplated as funding from some kind of public source?
So we have approximately, let me see if I can see it, oh, CFD. So up on the top in the sources, so there's $824 million coming from community facility district financing, which is only on, from the EDC property, not outside of the EDC property. It's just bond sales for EDC property. We can't really-
Could you please clarify for those who are tuning in for the first time, what is EDC?
The Economic Development Conveyance Parcel, which is the Concord Naval Weapons Station that we, the component that we would be developing.
And CFD?
For the 2,300 acres.
Okay.
Community Facilities District is a bond financing mechanism where you can sell bonds. It's secured by the property. It's secured by the property for that. And then it's paid off by that property on the tax roll over the next 30 years. So as us owning or controlling that property, we can vote ourselves to have a CFD on that property. We can't go put it on another property, the property within the Concord Naval Weapons Station. So that, that funding, you know, when you go to, for a bond sale on it, there's different rates that you can get for it. You have to, you have to have certain criteria for value to loan ratios on it. It really does require us to develop the property first to be able to get reasonable rates and to actually be able to go out and sell bonds. So we're going to be investing our own capital in both onsite, offsite infrastructure. And then once we, typically, once we start vertical development is when we start issuing bonds, because that's when you can get the better rates, because the bondholders like to have confidence that they're going to get paid back. And usually that confidence comes when they actually see vertical components in the air. That's typical. It is possible to sell them early, earlier on. It's, it's not always the course of business. So, so yes, we are planning to invest private capital to go out and do a lot of the infrastructure upfront. And then as the development starts occurring, some of that can be re-patriated from the CFD funds to help as a source of funding.
So is it fair to say, you know, you're going to be putting in 105 million of your own? If we're looking at the difference between the 919 minus 824 that you plan to recapture through CFDs?
So the 919, the CFDs can also be used for the 612 below that, potentially the 193 below that. It can also be used for impact fees. So there's probably over $2 billion that would qualify for CFD uses. So, so a lot of it's going to be, it's, it's probably majority of it's going to be private capital being invested to do it. And less than half percent is, or less than half of it's probably CFD funded.
Okay, so if we're looking at 2 billion, you're telling us that, that Brookfield's going to put in 1 billion?
Yes.
Okay, because we've received questions specifically wanting to know, so.
And you got to keep in mind, this is an ongoing development, so the, the contributions get turned over. So you go out, develop, we'll be able to sell land, get capital back in, and then that goes out, back out to develop more property.
Okay.
So you're looking at an aggregate over the life of the project.
Okay, so just to confirm, so I can say this clearly. So is it true that no current today, people who own property in Concord today are going to be taxed under a CFD to finance development at the Naval Weapons Station?
That is correct.
Okay, thank you. And then is it true? Well, I guess I don't know that you can answer this based on your response, but the other question was, is it true that no public financing will be used to start the very first backbone infrastructure? So there's nothing out there right now. So when you get started, you're investing?
Yes.
Okay, just thank you. Please bear with me. Okay, so moving on. Oh, you have a follow-up? Sure.
Just have a follow-up. I just want to make sure if an opportunity arises where the state has funds, that's public financing. And we're able to access those funds for certain infrastructure improvement, that would be public financing. I think the intent was we're not using city-
Correct.
Public financing. If there's other opportunities out there, that would still be looked at.
Yes, we would welcome that.
Federal money, state money.
We don't currently have that in the plan, but yes, we would very much welcome it.
Okay, okay, thank you. So continuing on, there's a section on page 37 of the term sheet that talks about environmental cleanup. And to summarize that section, it's basically talking about a case where property, the Navy says it cleaned it up to, say, a residential standard. It has been transferred to you as a developer and then, uh-oh, something is discovered that needs to still be addressed. And so I know it's very important to the community to understand how the community will be kept safe, you know, should this instance occur. And so, you know, I'd like to know, Brookfield has, you know, done a lot of development. Have you encountered such a situation? And if yes, how have you addressed it?
Yes, yes, actually we have. And I think the key piece of it, too, is this is a project that we're going to be involved with for many years. So we're extremely sensitive about the reflection of what environmental issues can be. So we're, we're extremely sensitive about it. We have had, there's a good instance, actually here in the Bay Area on a project, where after we started development, we did run into the EPA drop thresholds on certain substances, probably four years ago, I think. And so when we were doing de-watering, oftentimes that gets sampled and tested, and we did pass over some thresholds. So we actually did a community engagement, engagement outreach, educated them on what was going on, what we were going to be doing. So we had to do a whole lot of testing. At the end of the day, doing a full site assessment analysis, we worked through it. And it became, you know, it wasn't a challenging or, or it wasn't, it was from a public perspective, everybody seemed to feel pretty comfortable about it. We've gotten to the end of the road on that one already with a no further action letter. It is an example of where we actually are relying on the insurance company to help pay for some of the costs on it. But yeah, it's, it does happen and there are ways to handle it. And I think one of the ways that we know is, is the best for making everybody feel comfortable about it is educating and making the community aware of it and working with the city to understand what is the, what's occurring, what the steps are, how are we going to address it?
Sure, you have a follow-up?
Yeah, I have a follow-up. While we're on that topic, you mentioned insurance that you got, you sought reimbursement through your insurance carrier. But as I saw in the term sheet, it's required that you have pollution liability coverage. And that would be for, is there a term or is that for the duration of your involvement in the base? Or how far does that carry thereafter? Because, you know, sometimes things come up a year or two after developer.
Yeah. So the intent is that we would have it through the term of it. It's something that we normally would want. You know, I'm, I, I don't know how long after that it would occur. I'm not that technically knowledgeable about, about the extent of duration of it, but.
Okay, thank you. So I have a few more questions. So, you know, the, the density, the majority of the density contemplated for this project has always been in the northern part. And the northern part of the property is landlocked currently by Port Chicago Highway. So I'm just, I know that things will be studied. I know that that's the answer. But has there been any initial thought given to how to mitigate that so that there's not an undue burden on the new as well as the existing residents of North Concord?
So yes, we haven't done traffic analyses yet. I know, you know, Barry and Angela at CBG in laying out the framework for our plan. If you'll, you'll notice on the infrastructure framework, there is more arterial roadway that's up in the northern section to help bear the burden of a denser population there. One of the first steps that we will be undertaking is a traffic study. So during this next one-year period, we're going to be focusing quite a bit just on the infrastructure planning, utility planning, designing roads. And so one of the big question marks is traffic and having a traffic study done. So we will be kicking that off. And that will help inform us a lot around how can we help alleviate and provide the necessary network, both onsite and offsite, if there are any improvements that we should be doing offsite to help with that traffic mitigation.
Thank you, because as it is now, I think we all know what Highway 4 looks like, beginning at 3:30, and then that backs up onto Olivera Road, Port Chicago. It's a, it's a nightmare today without 33,000 more people. So another question I had, so you talked about community engagement. So part one is, does Brookfield have plans to open an office in Concord so that you will be right here to meet with our staff and engage with our community?
Yes, we definitely will be planning to do that. It probably would likely occur as we get fully into the specific plan and EIR process. It could be sooner. I would anticipate for the next six, nine months, we're going to be spending a decent amount of time just negotiating through the Navy part of the term sheet. But yeah, at some point, it definitely would be an advantage having a local office here.
Thank you. And then in terms of, so it was touched upon a little bit, the community engagement plan. So in the event that this term sheet is approved tonight, when would the first community activity take place? Because I know there are a lot of community members eager to continue to engage with Brookfield on this project.
Yes, it actually already occurred. We, we did a Save Mount Diablo coordinated tour of the base a couple of weeks ago, three weeks ago.
Okay, so the next one then?
So the next one would, would be in the next three months.
Okay, okay.
We don't have a specific date targeted yet, but.
Okay.
Yes.
Okay, thank you. And then I'd like to come back to North Concord and the green buffer for that area. So I know that we, we saw some slides about that. And I don't see any kind of buffer between, I think the, the concern that's been repeatedly raised is to have some kind of buffer between East Sun Terrace and, and that part of the Naval Weapons Station. So can you talk to me more about that? Is that not included currently because BART isn't yet in the specific plan? You know, what are we doing to ensure that?
So adjacent to the Coast Guard and BART station?
So East Sun Terrace is further up, so it's closer to Port Chicago. It's directly behind the BART station.
So right now, this term sheet is covering our EDC portion of the property?
Should we maybe pull up a picture, please? Yeah, let's see which. Because there were, there were a number-
There you go.
Yes, let's-
I should point out, which the area she's talking about is, you got it right in there.
Right here?
No, but further south. There you go.
Right here?
Yeah, that's it.
Isn't that the Coast Guard property?
The six houses-
That's the Coast Guard.
So this is the Coast Guard property right here?
From the corner of the Coast Guard, upper left corner of the Coast Guard property. Behind, but adjacent to the BART parking lot. That's the area of concern.
Here, I'll come up and point it out. There's like a triangle. There's the yellow, then there's the BART, and it's that neighborhood. There's no green space.
So the last time we were here, we didn't have green space in the plan down around the former Coast Guard site. And we went back and studied the land use, well, actually the CRP plan, which shows a, those back parking lots on the BART site is a green buffer, which obviously we don't have the option to do because it's outside the plan area right now. So we have a, a need for a detention basin, which is that Lozenzer shaped site. And we are pulling the green around the corner. When we get into studying the infrastructure, what our hope is, is that we can pull that radius down in a way that still works for the infrastructure and circulation to create an additional buffer. But probably the best answer related to the BART site is it really needs to be solved in conjunction with the BART site, because just pulling the green space that was on the BART site onto our site doesn't help the Sun Terrace neighborhood in the sense that you still got the BART site parking lots and the wall and the activity there. So we didn't really meet the objective that we saw in that old plan. I would say we have added that green corridor that runs all the way up to the BART site, and it is still a work item.
So I'm sorry, could you point out what this green corridor is that you're talking about, that you added with the pointer? No, I think I know, but I just want to, I'd like to see him point it out.
I don't know if you can see my pointer on both screens, but it's on, so we added this, we pulled all this up into here along the Coast Guard site. And we also added a little bit of green space here. But there's also an infrastructure and a circulation challenge that the old plan had too. And we have it where we need to be able to come in off of Port Chicago in a, in a rational way and be able to get folks circulating around inside the site, so we don't just drive everybody in and out.
Excuse me. Madam Clerk, will that show up on our video? Okay.
Uh-oh.
The odds are no. Okay.
No, but they, they didn't have it on a close camera anyway. It's like-
Guy, can you just point to it? No, just use your finger. Just go up there.
Oh, yeah.
Oh, there we go.
Oh, it's the spotlight.
That's correct.
Yeah, exactly.
That's correct.
As we plan this, this may, this may change.
Yeah.
But that's what we got. Thank you.
Which button is it, Guy?
So the, so the point is, right now, so right now, as we're talking, we have not added, there is no green space added on the BART property because BART has not yet decided whether they want to be part of the specific plan.
It's outside our planning.
Okay, but you were, what you're telling us is that you have taken some feedback and you have added some green space in the northern part of the project.
We have.
Okay.
And I would say we also looked at the CRP plan and it had between 10 and 14 acres of that green frame on the BART site. So when that site is planned out, it's an important component of the planning for that site.
Yes, it is.
But it is outside our boundary.
And CRP is the Concord Reuse Plan is what you're referring to?
That was approved in 2012, included that site. And that's the only major change from the boundary was that, especially that site from the CRP plan.
Okay, thank you. Those are all my questions at this time. I will reserve comments for later.
Both comments do come later. Now, is there any further questions? I have Laura Hofmeister, then Laura Nakamura.
Yeah, I had a couple.
Laura, who do you have them for?
Well, let me start with the staff. I had a couple for them, just to make sure as we move forward in the term sheet. There was a comment that was made about the liability insurance. And I'm just wondering, because it has come up in projects where after a developer, I'm thinking of Across the Way in Benicia, you know, when they had stuff that came up, I think it was in Southampton. Sometime after the developer left, the question was who would pay? Is there a timeframe after to say, because I know they're carrying liability insurance. It's a 40-year process. You'll have it for that duration, but that five years afterwards, the liability insurance is still there for the?
Well, the liability insurance-
We don't have it to say how long it goes when I look at the term sheet. The pollution liability insurance is what I'm looking at.
Right. So to the extent that, what this term sheet requires is that the master developer is part of developing the project and getting it ready to sell to vertical developers, will carry a PLL policy that covers both the master developer and, and the city or LRA through that process. We will, we can and potentially will discuss what happens once a property sells to a vertical builder and what a vertical builder is required to do. But that would be something that we discuss in the specific plan and the DDA and work out in the future documents.
Okay. So we still have an opportunity to fine tune the language that's in the term sheet. My concern is covering the city, after we have vertical development, something comes up, who's going to pay for it? It ain't going to be the city taxpayers. I'm trying to find that we do have liability insurance, because I know you spoke about this, I think, at a prior meeting, that we would ensure that we would have pollution liability insurance that would carry forward so that in case something came up, and I'm assuming it would be carried by the developer.
Yes.
And so I just didn't see any timeframe listed in the term sheet, other than that they-
The term sheet, the term sheet as written assumes that the developer will cover the project effectively from the first transfer of property through the sale of property or vertical developers, right? And so what happens after a property sells to a vertical developer will probably follow common practice, but we could decide to do something different. And that's something we can discuss in the specific plan and in the DDA as we move forward with the project.
So there's still an opportunity to fine tune things in the DDA related to that topic?
The term sheet is a framework and everything can be fine tuned in the DDA and the specific plan as we move forward. And many things will because reality will intervene.
And then the other question I had was related to the BART property. Councilmember or Vice Mayor Obringer brought up about the Sun Terrace neighborhood, the green buffer that we were looking at, which is really the BART property that abuts them. What's the status with BART or how can we engage? Or is there an opportunity to engage BART into this if we move forward with the master developer and start getting going? Would they be interested in looking again at the North Concord BART station planning?
So you have correspondence from BART in your packet tonight. We have had a discussion with BART about whether they want to be included in the specific plan or not. They are still contemplating that. Their comments sort of misread our interpretation or what we meant to say about BART in the term sheet. We are perfectly willing to accept and- to say about BART in the term sheet. We are perfectly willing to accept and work with BART and coordinate with BART on infrastructure and include them in the specific plan. But we do expect them to pay some nominal proportional share of these planning costs if they want their property in this document. But as it pertains to SEQA, we're going to have to, as part of our environmental review for our project, take a wild-ass guess as to what they're going to do and contemplate that in the specific plan, EIR, and take care of it, or assume it and cover it. So we will work with BART, have offered to work with BART. Obviously, the concept of taking a big chunk of the BART station property and turning it into a green frame is probably not something BART is terribly excited to do. And they have certain rules and regulations, and they can approve a certain level of development on their site without our approval. So it's just a complicated situation. It's a TOD project. We'd like to include them if they want to be included.
Okay. And then the city participation in the project returns greater than 18%. The city share would be 40% with returns between 18 and 20%. That was outlined in the PowerPoint.
Correct.
And 50% if it's over 20%. So what happens if it doesn't make the 18%?
There is-
That's everybody's best guess. We hope that that works out, but below 18%, it's zero, right?
Yeah, to the city.
Yes, to the city.
So if it's 15 or 16%, that's what Brookfield makes for that particular phase, and there would be no profit sharing with the city until it makes 18% or greater.
Okay. There's no guarantee that it will.
That's right.
No, absolutely not.
Okay. I just want to make sure people are aware, that it's just full transparency and information. And then the other question I had was, as they go off-site or as they do some of the horizontal infrastructure work, the access to that property, what method would be utilized to do that? Is that temporary conveyance, a right-of-entry? What's being looked at for them to?
Well, in other words, for instance, bringing water from the CCD facility-
Infrastructure, horizontal infrastructure, right.
Right. We'd use encroachment permits and other, just like we would do for any development project within the city, right? The city would work and create corridors for that work. We would provide the right-of-way, because they'd be in city streets for the most part, those sorts of things. Is that the question you're asking?
Well, there's other properties that they would have to get through as well to do the horizontal infrastructure. I think somewhere in the term sheet, or it was talking about a right-of-entry?
Well, the right-of-entry is a method, is a method for Brookfield to be authorized to go in and provide and build infrastructure on base property-
Correct.
-without owning it. So the city, the Navy would transfer property to the city or LRA. We would then authorize Brookfield in phases 1A, sub-phase 1A or 1B, to perform certain infrastructure.
Horizontal infrastructure.
We would continue to be the owner. They would provide and do the infrastructure under a right-of-entry to do that. And then once it's ready to be sold, that's when it would come out of city ownership into whoever buys it to do vertical development for that particular subdivision.
And then whatever's the public roads would be conveyed as the public roads with the proprieties?
Public roads within the base would stay with the city.
Right. And then, but the other method, because it was brought up about what happens if they go bankrupt, you know, there's another example that another jurisdiction had where they had to buy back the property, but we're not conveying it in title-
Right.
-to them. It's different.
So in theory, if they go bankrupt, under the right-of-entry, we'd still own the property, and they, in theory, and in fact, will have put up bonds that the city can then call upon to finish the infrastructure, and we would still own the property.
And then the Port Chicago, the extension of Vora Road, I'm sorry, yeah, the extension of Vora Road, Kenny Boulevard, at Port Chicago Highway, along the golf course, which is really Highway 4, I think it is, is a widening of Highway 4?
It aligns with Highway 4, yes.
Who pays for that? Is that going to be the developer? Because it wasn't clear in the PowerPoint.
Well, we throw the term developer and project around, and they're actually the same thing. So accepting this term sheet, getting to entitlements, at that point, it's the project. Now, the developer is committed to invest hundreds of millions of dollars. And part of those hundreds of millions of dollars in the first phase will be that of Vora Road connection, because that's where the offsite infrastructure will come through and down Kenny Boulevard into the project proper, right?
And then on Willow Pass Road, speaking of Kenny, the Kenny Bridge-
Yes.
-that's all part of Phase 1. And so that bridge would be removed and then replaced with a bridge that still crosses the creek, but it'd be more closer to At Gray, kind of like what we have when we go to Sun Valley, down Willow Pass in that direction. Is that the plan?
Correct. I'm trying to think if we go back, if we see it.
And it's really tiny, I think, but-
Yes.
It's in Phase 1A or thereabouts.
This bridge will be, this is Willow Pass today-
Yes.
-straight. Willow Pass will curve. It will come across Mount Devil Creek in a perpendicular fashion to make it more normal, and then curve again and reattach. And then these will be widened, right?
Right.
So, yes.
So then in Phase 1A, that's where I think the Kenny Bridge is located?
Yes.
Yes. So that gets taken down and widened, and it would be widened at the, I don't know, four lanes, whatever the traffic study says. But basically, I'm assuming it's more than one lane in each side, because things bottleneck as they build up from the highway there. So that basically, I just want to make sure I understood, that's in the early construction?
Yes.
And then the other, I'm trying to keep to questions. And then the other one is, the construction of fire station in Phase 2 and another in Phase 4 talks about a $10 million contribution. Is it possible that the developer actually could build the fire station and turn it over to the fire district? I know that's been done in other areas of CCFD to help expedite the fire station construction process.
Councilmember, I believe that's how the term sheet's worded. It's a contribution or in lieu of-
Okay. I know the PowerPoint just talked about the contribution. I just wanted to make sure that the other option was-
In almost every instance where an amount of money is being proffered by the developer or by the project, Brookfield has reserved the right, out of efficiency and for other reasons, to actually construct the facility themselves.
Right. Okay. That's my questions at this point.
I then will go with Nakamura. Councilmember Nakamura.
Yeah, go ahead and stay there for me. Thank you. I know that a lot of work has gone into this, the term sheet, and I really appreciate the fact that we're here tonight. With regards to the first amendment to the term sheet, we're going from a two-year expectation to a four-year expectation, and I think that's really been explained well. Is the Navy on board with this? Is that, does this fit in, fall into their expectations?
So, great question. It's the first amendment to the ENA, the Exclusive Agreement to Negotiate. I know that doesn't make sense. We call it ENA, but it's really EAN, but whatever. So the Navy is largely in agreement. They obviously, no, perhaps not obviously, they would like to convey property to us as soon as possible. So they too would like to meet with us as soon as possible. But they don't want to meet with us unless we have a term sheet and a partnership with Brookfield. Then, once we meet with the Navy, the Navy is going to explain to us what they see as the optimum path to an agreement between our two parties to get this project going, to get the party started, so to speak. And so, yes, the Navy understands that it might take longer. They very much like the fact that we're focusing on resolving our agreement with them first, and they understand the timeframes involved, and will tell us what other timeframes they would like us to take into consideration when we meet with them next.
Okay. And then as far as moving faster from a two-year to four-year timeframe, is it, what's needed to move faster on this? These, we're talking about housing and jobs. So is it resources? Is it people? What's needed to move faster?
No, it's certainty. So effectively, Brookfield understandably wants to be more certain about what the project looks like, what the Navy would like to see out of the project, so that Brookfield has a better understanding of the complete cost. We've done a very good job in this conceptual pro forma to estimate costs. But until we go see the Navy, negotiate with the Navy, and arrive at a deal with the Navy, we don't know precisely what those costs are. And so Brookfield would like to get more knowledge about that, more certainty about that. And Brookfield would like to spend some more time, as they articulated or said earlier, about infrastructure cost mitigation. So we will be looking at traffic. We will be looking at remediation. We will be looking at resource permitting, an additional permitting that needs to be done to get the project going, and what that might cost. So that having a better idea of what those costs are, they're more certain in developing the specific plan and getting it underway.
Okay. And then in, I think it was the Exhibit B, I'm sorry, I need to speak up for you.
Yeah.
The pre-development number, can you go into a little, can you elaborate a little bit more about what goes into pre-development, those costs?
What's that typically comprised of?
So Exhibit B.
Exhibit B1, second item on uses, $511.1 million.
So we have-
Thank you.
It's tentative mapping, city processing fees.
I'm sorry, Josh, can you speak up?
It's the, it's the cost for consultants and city fees for processing tentative maps, resource agency permitting costs, final map, improvement plan, inspections, all the typical costs that we would incur as we're developing a tentative map, the improvement plans to put the infrastructure plans together that we would then use to build the project. So a lot of it's those costs.
So a really simplistic way to-
Can you come closer to the mic?
Yes, Mr. Mayor.
Yes.
A real simplistic way to describe that is, those are the things that would need to be done after we get to entitlements to actually start to design things and decide how they're going to go into the ground. So it's something that generally would occur either right around entitlement or just after entitlement, so three years from now.
Okay. And then I had a question about the affordable housing and the, bear with me here. There's a number, 50% is for affordable housing. Can you speak a little bit more about, Josh, what Brookfield does or does not do with affordable housing, and whether it's profit or nonprofit, and why the number is 50% in the term sheet?
Yeah. So in the term sheet, it allows for us to be a facilitator of the affordable housing program for the project. So as you can imagine, as we're developing the various phases, we're going to have over 3,000 units worth of affordable housing that will be occurring over time. And so we're going to be developing the infrastructure, the paths for those, and then we'll be working with the city to bring those out to the market, to sell them to affordable developers in a RFP type of situation, because we want to make sure the group's coming in and doing it, or it's a competitive environment so that we get the best cost we can on it. You know, while Brookfield has the obligation to provide the land and subsidies for the affordable housing, the success of the overall project does hinge on making sure the affordable housing does occur. So we want to be able to reserve the ability to develop 50% of it, in the event that we do need to sort of step in and help get it moving along, because it doesn't look good for any of us if it's not happening in an orderly fashion. So it allows us the ability to step in and do it. At this point, we don't typically develop vertical affordable housing, but we've got it in, occurring in a lot of our projects, so we're very familiar with it.
Okay.
Yeah, I just want to, he cleaned it up, but we're not going to sell the affordable housing properties. We're going to create a program by which firms compete and are chosen for a particular number of acres to develop the project and operate the project, right? So we're going to, the project will provide the land and the infrastructure. We're not selling the land or the infrastructure to them. But we will select them based on who's ready to do it, who's got the resources to do it, so on and so forth. And so I just wanted to clarify that.
Okay, great. And then, Josh, this may be a question for you. This has to do with the, in the term sheet, it's called transitional housing. And as someone who worked on the Homeless Strategic Plan Working Group, knowing the difference between transitional housing for homeless and permanent supportive housing, the resources that are there and making sure people have a permanent place to live is the key, is like the gold standard. Can you talk about why it's called, in the, in the term sheet, it's called transitional?
It should be called permanent supportive housing in the term sheet, right? Yeah. So is an error.
Is that going to be changed? Or when will that be changed?
We don't have to change it in the term sheet. We can change it in the specific plan as we move forward.
Okay.
So the goal, you can call it anything you want, right? I mean, permanent supportive housing is actually a phrase that's not found in the legally binding agreement. The legally binding agreement calls it homeless units, but I don't think we want to call it that. So, yes, it should not have been called transitional in the term sheet. It should be called permanent supportive housing, and that's fine.
Okay, great. Just wanted to call that out.
I've got her first. Are you finished?
I have a couple more, but let me-
Okay, go.
If you want to go ahead.
I just wanted to follow up on that one point.
Carlin had something she wanted to slip in first.
I think you had a follow-up on that specific.
Yeah, that specific point.
Yours is a follow-up on this?
Yeah. I believe, though, tonight, if we were to accept the term sheet, we could easily say with the modification to change the term, and that would not be-
Let's do that.
Just so it's clear to everybody at the get-go, and we're not having to have somebody, I mean, you know, God bless Josh, but you know, should something happen to you and somebody else comes in from Brookfield and says it doesn't say that, I want to make sure everybody's clear, so we can say that this evening.
Councilmember Nakamura, are you ready to continue? Carlin, you had one point you said you missed.
Thank you. So I actually had two. Give me a time, and I come up with more questions. So Josh, these are for you. So the first, the term sheet refers to open book accounting. And so I think it's important for people to understand what you mean by that. Who gets to look at this? Is it, you know, the average Concordian can come down and look at your books, or who has access to this? Could you clarify, please?
Sure. So our open book accounting, we provide all of the information to city consultants that review that information and then provide a summary report to the city staff. So the general public can't come and just look at our books. It does go to a city consultant for them to review, verify. There's audit rights in there, so they can dig into the details and confirm stuff. But that is a fairly typical way of doing it for developments like this.
Okay. And Guy, are the consultants who can look at this, at least one of them is present?
That's absolutely correct. And then the city consultants would then work with city staff in Brookfield to produce an annual report. And that annual report on the project will be provided to the public and to the council, right? So that's what open book means. Open book between the LRA and its financial advisors and consultants and Brookfield, so that we can make sure that everything is being done ultimately to conform to the agreements we currently have or to the new DDA and the things that need to be addressed as we go forward once entitlements are occurred.
Thank you.
Quick follow-up on that. I know we have a glossary that was added into the term sheet, into the documents. Is it possible to have what you just stated put into something so that it's clear for the general public to understand what open book is? Because I think a general layperson believes open book means I can go down and go see all the ins and outs and all the details of Brookfield's financials.
We can, we can put something on the website and put a notation in the document.
Just an asterisk that says-
The glossary is actually referential, not, right? So at any rate.
All right. Laura, like Carlin to finish, and then Nakamura to finish.
Okay, thank you. And then I also, this question is also for you, Josh. So one of my many concerns about a previous master developer was, you know, once they had a term sheet approved, this was the best-kept secret in, you know, the Bay Area. They didn't go around and tell anybody that they were hoping to redevelop the former Concord Naval Weapons Station, nor did they leverage any of their relationships. And I knew this for a fact, because I went all over the place, and nobody knew a thing about it. So if we- So if we, you know, approve this term sheet tonight, what are your plans as you're developing the specific plan, et cetera, et cetera, to let, because Brookfield is an international company, how will you leverage those relationships that you have to help us, for example, establish a branch of a campus, or get a grocery store in Phase One? You know, what are your plans?
Yeah, so it would be in our best interest to get out in the public and try to find users for the Innovation District, Campus District, tomorrow. And we already have, for those that don't know the Brookfield family of companies, there's Brookfield Renewable, Brookfield Infrastructure, and then a number of groups within the Brookfield Properties Organization that do industrial, retail. And so we've already had meetings with those different team members to make them aware of the Concord Naval Weapons Station opportunity that we're exploring. And so we've already had some strategy discussions around where could different teams be able to find value in the development there. I know one of the things that we will be exploring out of the gate is PG&E. Power is in high demand by a lot of the technology-related companies, and oftentimes we're finding that power is a little bit harder to find in even the core Bay Area markets. So that's something we want to stay on top of. And lo and behold, if we find that there's very ample, that's a huge selling point. So, yeah, between the Campus District, Innovation District, we'll be out there exploring literally tomorrow, how can we find a potential user? And that might influence the phasing as we're developing down the road. You know, if we find something that might be an opportunity, we may figure out how to piece out an Innovation District component or a Campus component that could be earlier than just where it's shown on the current phasing plan. And that's a little bit also how the phasing plan developed. Those Phase II-A and II-B areas are easily activated with the infrastructure that we have around it, so.
Okay, thank you.
Nakamura?
Yeah, my question had dealt with transparency and the open book accounting, but I think it's been answered. Thank you.
Okay. Aliano, you are concerned, and you're okay. How often I see you late, son?
Yes.
Question for Exhibit B, and I'm not sure if it's Mr. Berkey or Josh, but the pro forma that we have is Exhibit B, I just want to make sure I'm clear. That is a summary of all phases, is that correct? That's the total?
Yes, that's, this is an estimated summary of the completed project.
So I don't need it for tonight, but behind this, was it done for each phase and then totaled somewhere in some sort of other program? Have you done it by phase? I assume you have done it phase by phase by phase-
Yes.
On this? Okay. I'd just be interested to have what it looks like for each phase.
No.
I missed it if it was in the packet.
No, this is the complete summary.
Of all phases combined?
That is public, yes.
But do we have, did, in preparation of this-
Our financial advisors have reviewed the complete conceptual pro forma and found that it meets expectations and works. And this is the roll-up summary that we're providing as a public summary.
But does it work by each phase?
Yes.
That's what I was looking for the back-
I'm sorry, the projected, that's what the middle box demonstrates. Each phase, the first phase generates an eighteen percent IRR, so it works. The next phase does a little better, so on and so forth. That's a representative of each phase independently and cumulative.
So is there any issue in if they, if the information, I don't want to create information that doesn't exist, but if the information already exists, to have the same data, where it has how much their entitlements in Phase One, Phase Two, Phase Three, Phase Four, so that we had the same sheet, but for each phase, and then a total that would be this piece?
Well, first of all, the entitlements over the next three years, not by phase, right? And then pre-development costs are different things that will, so, so no, that doesn't, I mean-
It doesn't correlate phase by phase?
Correct.
Because some of this covers all phases, and some of it does cover individual phase or two phases or phase A, B. Okay. And then the other question I had is probably for Josh. The conceptual preliminary land use plan, it looks like it's the same scale as what we had back in twenty whatever, the current area plan. But am I missing something? Because it looks like the connectivity pieces between Mount Diablo Creek going toward the green frame, those green lines that connect are smaller in width than what we have in our current area plan. Am I-
You mean like these?
Yeah, you've got two of them. The third one seems to be about the same width, but those connections between the creek open space back to the green frame area, looks like in this conceptual plan, that they've got shrunk by a substantial amount compared to the plan we have currently.
You mean these?
No, 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 the ones that go up and down.
Yeah, I think the, the land use plan from 2012 through the specific planning process that went through in 2019 and were, and then there was another plan that was done.
Those don't count anymore, I'm going back to their area plan.
But what I was going to say, just making a point, when we were looking at the layout and the evolution of, I think, current best practices, what we illustrated is linear, long linear parks, and everything wired together within the park system. And it is, again, conceptual and needs to have detail added to it, but the concept is actually to build the park system into the linear parks, rather than just have a linear park with the park system separate. I don't know a better way to put that, and we're illustrating-
I don't think you're catching my point. I just see that I'm losing open space connectivity, green frame connectivity from the creek to the buffer area behind Bishop Estates. It shrunk a huge amount between what I'm looking at now and where we're looking at today.
Councilmember, you're right, it's not at, it's not at scale. And the width of those particular connectors between the green frame and Mount Diablo Creek will be further studied in the specific plan, but we are trying to make sure that the project pencils. So yes, we're noting that they exist in this plan, they will need to be further discussed, and you will have another opportunity to review them as we discuss them in the specific plan.
Okay. That was my question, because I did overlay the two on my light table, and it looked like that both plans were the same scale, and all I got is a little thin pencil line versus something that's as thick as a double wide marker. So I'm, that's a substantial change in concept, so I'm just trying to understand how much more this concept plan is that's tied to the term sheet.
Remember, the area plan was a conceptual plan-
I get that.
-that was footnoted at every opportunity as being in need of a specific plan to implement it. So it's not necessarily fair to compare it to this. I understand you would like a wider-
The concern is I see a trend, and I'm not comfortable with the trend going narrower, and that's what I just wanted to make sure that where your thoughts were, that it was, it looks like that as you analyzed it, there was an intent to maybe make it a little narrower and put those green areas into other active parks or other places.
That would be an accurate statement, yes.
Okay.
Yep.
Thank you. That's all I had, Mayor.
All right. With that, I want to thank my colleagues, who sort of like hit on just about everything I was going to do and saved my throat. And then I will, I want us to take a five-minute break, and then we'll bring it to the public. Okay? Five-minute break, folks. For public comment, Madam Clerk, I don't know how many we have, but read the next three at a time, and we'll have three minutes.
Okay, Mayor. The first three speakers are Mark Foley, followed by Scott Wagner, and Noah Lonnie Fixler.
Good evening, Mayor and Vice Mayor, City Councilmembers. My name is Mark Foley. I am the Vice President of the BART Board of Directors, and a twenty-plus-year former Concord resident. My mom is a forty-four-year current Concord resident, so I am truly looking forward to this transformational, once-in-a-lifetime opportunity to build a city within a city.
And you are the one who represents the North Concord BART Station.
And my district too, as you mentioned, does in fact not only represent North Concord, but the entire Concord Naval Weapons Station. So that parcel of land or pieces of the property, if you will, are all in my neighborhood. So as much as I love this project as a former resident, there are a couple of concerns I wanted to raise, because I need your help. There are two pieces of language in the term sheet that BART has concerns with, that we're hoping that you can strike and modify tonight. We're concerned that the term sheet would prevent the development of high-quality transit-oriented development that would be an asset not only to the city of Concord, but also provide necessary riders to BART. To be successful, TUD projects require appropriate zoning and infrastructure. No other jurisdiction that we've worked with at BART has asked us to pay for the necessary water, power, and infrastructure improvements that we're being asked to do in this particular term sheet. BART is a transit agency with significant forecasted deficits, and not in a financial position to pay for infrastructure upgrades at this time. Appropriate, local, adopted zoning that meets and exceeds, or exceeds the standards set forth in Assembly Bill 2923 is also critical to a successful transit-oriented development. In previous conversations with city staff, BART staff believed that the Concord Naval Weapons Station's specific plan process would get started several months after the term sheet's approval, and there would be ample time to discuss whether BART's land would be involved. It's unfortunate that the draft term sheet seems to eliminate this option. BART respectfully requests that the city council strike, these are two items, it's on page seventeen, item FII. Again, page seventeen, item FII. And on page twenty-four, item D. Those two items in the term sheet before you this evening are-
Repeat the last one.
Sure. It's page twenty-four, item Diaz and David. So those two items on the term sheet in front of you this evening are of concern, and we look forward to collaborating with you to help resolve these issues. And I have BART staff here as well, they can help answer any detailed questions. Thank you.
Can I just follow up to get clarification of a statement that Mr. Foley made, Mayor?
Go.
Yeah, because you asked for item on page seventeen, FII-
Yes.
-which is one sentence. Then there's followed by A, B, and a whole variety of other things that keep going for pages and pages and pages, so I'm a little unclear what you're asking to be stricken.
Is it A and B, I, I, and then A and B?
Yeah, A and B.
I, I, and then A and B that come underneath?
The next page is GHI, that represents the follow-up of-
Oh, yes, I'm sorry. So it's both A and B.
A and B.
Let me confirm with staff. Is that correct? We're double checking.
Okay. You can get back to us, thank you.
Of course. Thank you.
Good evening, Mayor, Vice Mayor, and Councilmembers, staff. Scott Wagner, speaking as a representative from the Concord Police Association, as well as a member and also resident of Concord. But I'm really speaking in favor of Brookfield Properties as the master developer in this project, and hope that the council will approve the term sheet tonight. We, as an association, have met with Brookfield Properties and feel they will be a great partner for the Concord community. They've been open with us in their discussions about law enforcement integration and impact for this project, which I believe will still continue. With some local roots and interests of Brookfield Properties in the Bay Area, we feel that they'll be providing us all of their best possible work in this project, and they have many good reasons for making this plan function at their highest quality, or their highest quality possible. I really wanted to keep it short and brief, but thank you for your time, and please approve that term sheet tonight. Thank you.
Thank you. Madam Clerk? And the next three?
Good evening, City Council, staff, and Brookfield. I am speaking this evening on behalf of Green Belt Alliance in support of the Concord Naval Weapons Site. For over sixty years, Green Belt Alliance has helped create cities and neighborhoods that make the Bay Area a better place to live, healthy places where people can walk and bike, communities with parks, shops, transportation options, and homes that are affordable and resilient to climate change. We have several comments and suggestions for the term sheet, and hope that the council will consider our recommendations tonight. We appreciate the explanation of affordable housing and how that will be distributed throughout the spaces of the project, and the inclusion of language regarding funding sources for affordable housing. We recommend adding specific state and federal programs that the developer will be applying to, and information about nonprofit developers being considered. We would prefer a larger portion of affordable housing development to be undertaken by standalone affordable housing developers. We are requesting clarity in how the required veterans' housing will be integrated with the other units, specifically if it will be included with the count of total affordable units, as this remains unclear in the term sheet. Regarding the distance of these units from public transit, we recommend adding language about a specific distance, for example, maybe half a mile from public transit. And we appreciate the specific language regarding the phasing of the creek restoration efforts and the prioritization to begin this process in earlier phases. Adding Walnut Creek watersheds is essential for comprehensive environmental considerations. We have also sent a letter to council regarding these comments, and look forward to continuing to work with the city of Concord and Brookfield and staff throughout the development process. Thank you.
Thank you. Next.
The next three speakers are Tom Hanson, followed by Eric Haynes, followed by Woody Karp.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor, Councilmembers. Thank you for allowing me to speak tonight. My name is Tom Hanson, I'm the Business Manager of IBW Local 302, and also the President of the Contra Casa Building Trades. I've come here tonight in support of this project. As Guy went over, it showed the long history of how much it took to get here and all the ups and downs we have. But tonight, you have a project before you that's broad-based support, with a very excellent developer that's worked hand-in-hand with the local building trades, and we support their application, and we encourage you to move on this, because this is, everybody seems to be happy. For the first time, let's just move forward and stay happy. Thank you.
Thank you. Next.
Thank you, Mayor Bresson, Council, staff, Brookfield. Eric Haynes, Business Representative with She-Metalworkers Local 104, I'm also a resident of Concord. My family's been here since the early 50s. I'm looking around the room, and what I see tonight, by a lack of people here not happy, I think we're moving forward in the right direction, and very excited to see this step, and many more come very quickly, hopefully, because, you know, our members would like to be to work. It creates a big opportunity for a lot of new apprentices to come to work through the schools, and just make Concord more blue-collar than it already is. So I am asking this council to approve. Thank you.
Good evening, Councilmembers. My name is Woody Karp. I am a former employee of Eden Housing. I'm here representing Eden Housing tonight, and I'm also a former board member of East Bay Housing Organization, and have been a longtime member of the Homeless Collaborative and the Affordable Housing Group advocating for affordable housing on this project. I come here tonight enthusiastically supporting Brookfield. I think that they have done an extraordinary job out, reaching out to the community. They've met with the constituents in the affordable housing industry on numerous occasions, and have listened and really understood the concerns. They have been upfront and honest in their approach with us. They have been upfront and honest in their approach with us. And so, and I feel that we can continue to work with them as we work through issues. Financing affordable housing is as complicated as anything can be. And I think they understand that, and I hope that the city and Brookfield will continue to work with developers in collaboration to find ways to meet the affordable housing financing needs. One thing that I would like to be considered is that, to the extent an infrastructure finance agreement is put in place, that affordable housing be included as an eligible use of those funds. So as funds come in and as we get to phases two, three, four, and five, there will be funds that will come in that can be allocated specifically for the development of affordable housing in those phases. I'm a little bit disappointed that the phasing allocates the $50 million that we certainly appreciate disproportionately towards the end of the project and not upfront equally. I think that at a minimum, it should be the $10 million in each phase rather than $5 million, $5 million, and then building it up in the later phases. Thank you.
Okay. Next.
The next three speakers, Miguel Mauricio, Bill Whitney, and Davina Suruyudum.
Can you repeat the last name, please?
Davina.
Okay. Thank you.
Good evening, Mayor, Vice Mayor, council, staff. Miguel Mauricio with the East Bay Leadership Council. The East Bay Leadership Council is a nonprofit organization representing employers across Contra Costa and Alameda Counties with the purpose to increase the economic vitality and quality of life for people here in the region. We believe this project, which would build over 12,000 units of housing, 25% of which would be affordable housing, protect green space and create high-quality jobs through both the construction of the project and through the retail and commercial space that would be created, would positively contribute to a thriving economy and the quality of life people here in Concord and the greater East Bay. We understand that this term sheet is just the very beginning, very first step in this process, but we look forward to engaging with the city council, Brookfield, as the details continue to take shape. But in short, we support the adoption of the term sheet as a first step in unlocking the full economic potential of this site. Thank you.
Thank you. Next. Mr. Whitney.
Good evening, council, mayor, vice mayor, staff. My name is Bill Whitney. I'm the Executive Director for the Contra Costa Building and Construction Trades Council. Wow. Like it says in the song, it's been a long time coming. I never thought we were going to get here. It wasn't that long ago that you couldn't get the master developer, labor, and the staff all on the same page. And I'm here tonight to thank Josh and Guy and Valerie for that. And I'm also here, I'd be remiss to not thank the council for all your support, for working men and women. Thank you for that. We're here, of course, to support this term sheet. We're excited about it. I would, however, for the record, like to say that it would be way okay with us if we could start digging dirt tomorrow. Other than that, let's go get them. Thank you.
Okay.
Hello, city council members, staff in Brookfield. My name is Davina Suruyudum, and I'm here today on behalf of East Bay Housing Organizations. I'm speaking today in strong support of the proposed term sheet between the city and Brookfield for the redevelopment of the Concord Naval Weapons Station site. EBHO has closely been following this project since 2007, as many of our 400-plus members and organizations work, live, or commute in Concord. We're happy to see the redevelopment of this naval station move forward, and we'd like to thank Brookfield and their team for their willingness to engage with the community and key stakeholders and for allowing ample time to review this term sheet prior to this meeting. This term sheet is a step in the right direction towards preventing further delay of the community's urgently-needed 3,000-plus affordable homes. Additionally, though, our members and organization believe that the current developer contribution of $50 million is simply not enough, so we're asking for a higher contributor amount and/or to ensure all the funds are available in Phase 1 to kickstart the development of transit-oriented affordable housing. We look forward to the continued collaboration between the city and Brookfield, and thank you all for your time tonight.
Next group.
The next three are Sophia DeWitt, Jessica Owens, and Lorenzo Jimenez.
Madam Clerk, can you help, or Guy? By the way. Thank you, Guy.
Yeah, you got to assist the folks that are a little shorter in stature as well. Good evening, council members, staff, and Brookfield. My name is Reverend Sophia DeWitt. I serve as Senior Director of Programs at East Bay Housing Organizations, and I'm here to say that we are broadly supportive of this term sheet and are very appreciative of Brookfield and their efforts to reach out to us in specific and to the affordable housing community generally. There are a few changes that we would like to see. One is a reduction in the amount of affordable housing that Brookfield is currently slated to do on its own, from 50% to 30%. We believe that this would not harm Brookfield as they currently don't have an affordable housing division, and it would allow more of that affordable housing to be built by nonprofit affordable developers based here in the area who are very familiar with that development process and how that works. And we also would like to see more of the developer contribution available earlier in the process, earlier in the phases, to help jump-start the development of that badly-needed affordable housing. And all of us know how difficult and challenging and expensive the development of affordable housing is. And so we are also aware that $50 million over the five phases is not going to be sufficient to build the affordable housing that's needed. So we would hope for leadership and willingness from the Brookfield team to help work to identify additional sources to support the development of that affordable housing, if they're not going to do it themselves from their funds through maybe the Bay Area Housing Finance Authority bond that might come in the future, or other state or federal sources. But we're happy that this project is moving forward and look forward to continuing to work with the city and Brookfield as the phases unfold. Thank you so much.
Good evening, Mayor and council. I would first like to thank you for my opportunity to speak here tonight. My name is Jessica Owens, and I'm a union carpenter apprentice. I'm here in support of Brookfield's term sheet and overall positive impact it will have on the city of Concord and the surrounding areas. Tonight, I stand before you as a living testament to the transformative power of having labor standards on a project. As a single mom, I have experienced firsthand the great impact of earning a livable wage and having access to health care. These crucial pillars have changed my life and the lives of countless others. I hope you understand the importance this project will have, and with your leadership, I hope you approve this term sheet so myself and my other brothers and sisters who are local can prosper and help contribute to Concord's growth. Thank you for your time.
Mayor, council members, thank you for the opportunity to speak. My name's Lorenzo Jimenez. I'm a commercial carpenter with Local 22 and a resident of Contra Costa County. I'm here to ask council to approve the term sheet for the Naval Weapons Station because it will bring much-needed union jobs, housing, and development in Concord. You see, throughout my years as a union carpenter, I have never had the opportunity to build something for my community. This also means I haven't had the chance to share the results of the training and skills I have learned from the union with my community. Since becoming a carpenter, my work has always been in other places far away from my home. I regularly drive four hours a day to commute to my job site and return home. Furthermore, the majority of my work and travel expenses, such as food, gas, tools, et cetera, are spent in other communities hours away from Contra Costa County. I wish I had the opportunity to spend that here locally. I'm not the only one. Thousands of union workers leave Contra Costa County daily to work in other areas. For these reasons, I urge the council to approve the term sheet. Thank you.
Thank you. Next.
Next three speakers, Chris Palomo, Jaime Gonzalez, and William Smith.
Good evening, Mayor, council members, Brookfield. My name is Chris Palomo, and I'm a field rep with the NorCal Carpenters Union at a Local 152 right here in Contra Costa County. I would first like to thank you guys for allowing me to speak tonight. I'd like to start off by saying thank you to Brookfield for their significant investment into our community. Tonight, I stand before you to advocate for the approval of Brookfield's term sheet. This pivotal initiative represents not just an opportunity for economic revitalization, but also a commitment to our community's future sustainability and heritage. The Concord Naval Weapons Station has long been a part of our city's fabric, embodying both rich history and potential for growth. By approving this term sheet, we are taking a significant step towards transforming this underutilized asset into a vibrant, mixed-use area that's going to bring great-paying construction jobs, housing, and green spaces to Concord. This project will serve as a catalyst for economic development with the potential to create thousands of jobs, both construction and operation. It will provide a substantial boost to our local economy. These jobs will span a wide range of industries, offering employment opportunities to our residents, attracting skilled workers and professionals to our city. This project also includes a comprehensive housing strategy. With a dire need for affordable housing in our region, this project will deliver a variety of housing options, making it possible for more families to call Concord home. This diversity in housing will foster a more inclusive community, reflecting the values that Concord holds dear. By approving this term sheet, we are laying the groundwork for a project that embodies careful planning, community input, and a vision for Concord's future. This is not just about development. It's about creating a legacy that future generations will inherit and appreciate. It's about making strategic decisions today that will benefit our city and its residents for years to come. Let us seize this opportunity and create a brighter future for all Concord residents. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. Next.
Good evening, staff, city council, vice mayor, mayor, and Brookfield team. I'll keep this short. My name is Jaime Gonzalez. I'm the Senior Business Representative for Operating Engineers Local 3, located here in Concord, and a delegate with the Contra Costa Building Trades. I'm here today to ask this council to please approve the Brookfield term sheet. If this project goes forward, it will bring many of our local skilled journeymen and women and apprentice local union jobs for many years to come. And we look forward for this project to get started. Thank you.
Good evening, council members, staff, and developers. I'm delighted to be here. I'm Bill Smith. I'm from Walnut Creek, but my heart is really in Concord. I bought my first home in Concord 37 years ago, out near the Concord Pavilion. And I used to drive by the Concord Naval Weapons Station quite often when I was out there and jogged and bicycled by there as well. So I know the community there. I moved to Alameda. I've been there for 30 years, and I was deeply involved with Sophie DeWitt here from EBHO and others in development of the Alameda Naval Weapons Station there. So I've been through this before. It's like deja vu. I think we went through two or three, maybe, I don't think, I think the fourth one, we finally hit it right with the master developer. We got it through there. And even he, and it's beautiful to see that's come to life now. And it started with the housing first. The housing was the key to the financing. And so one of the things I'm disappointed about to hear is that you're pushing the housing back later. And I wonder if that's just the affordable housing, you're pushing the market-rate housing forward. And I'll be looking closely at that later because your housing element has probably about one affordable unit per market-rate unit. And so that's what you need to get the right ratio. So if you don't build 50% affordable units at the Naval Weapons Station, where are the rest of the affordable going to go in Concord, all right, to make up for that? So that's an issue. So why are we pushing affordable housing back? All right? And then another thing I'd like to say, my connection's in Concord. I live right across the street from Elk Grove School, and we were laying in Walnut Creek. So I, and I walked to church at St. Francis, just down Smith Lane. I remember. That's why I bought, Smith Lanes, and my name's Smith, so, no, not really. But anyway, I do have connections with Concord, and I enjoy it. And I got to see the Clayton Hills. They were all cows when I left and moved out of town, and it's all sprouted homes back there since then. And so I'd like to see more of it around the transit-oriented demand. And that's another point. BART came up, and they're concerned. The affordable housing, those are the people that take transit. They support transit-oriented demand. They don't have the cars. And so you need to build that right and center it right in there, and that helps get your development off. Another thing I had, another bit of experience I had, I chaired the Alameda County Planning Commission for a year or so, and served on it for three. And so I got, so I understand the difficulties and have some experience with what you're going through with the public process. I've impressed so far at how you're doing and what you're doing. And so I'll be back to you with other suggestions. Oh, one other thing I should pass on, I have to do it in a moment. We did, in Alameda, the DDA was not the end of it. It was put on the ballot, referended by the people, by the master developer. I've never seen an election so lopsided against. The developer managed to unite the affordable housing advocates and the anti-housing development people in town. And so we ate it to nothing. So thank you.
Thank you. Next.
The last two speakers cards I have are for Randolph Hopkins, then Michael Hayes.
If there's anyone else who wants to get a card in, please do so now.
Good evening, Randolph Hopkins. I think it's great that you guys are trying to build housing, although I don't necessarily think it's a great setup the way you guys are doing it. Everybody's talking about jobs and needing jobs and having to drive four hours for jobs. Why are we not doing any industry? Why are we not putting in actual jobs that last more than the six or eight weeks it takes to build a house? And also, you guys talk a lot about affordable housing. Why is the city getting kickbacks when we're jacking up housing prices just so they can meet a certain percentage of income? Why not make the houses affordable for everybody and not take the kickback to the city? If it's over 18%, we get, what's the percentage back? There's a percentage. You spoke of it. So I think that that's, I think that's really bad. And I also think it's really bad to be building a whole new town when we're not taking care of the one we have. The roads are terrible. The parks look lousy. We can't even get any roof on the city hall down here. It's been tarp'd over now for a couple of weeks. So I just, I think that there's a lot of room for improvement, and I think that we could do a lot better by the citizens by creating actual jobs that last decades, not weeks. So, and it would also help cut down on the traffic that's already outrageous if we didn't build more homes, or so many at least.
Thank you.
Yep.
You can lift that up. There you go.
Mayor, Vice Mayor, council. Michael Hayes, I'm not a Concord resident. I live over in Benicia. But I'm a lifelong Bay Area resident, and I've seen the Bay Area and California change over the years, getting much larger and with all the population growth. And I really have, I've really seen this state, and particularly the Bay Area, go downhill. The traffic, the, all the different growth and the issues that come with growth. I don't see the state of actually improving over the years. If anything, it's gotten much harder to manage. And when I look at all the growth that's happened- If anything, it's gotten much harder to manage, and when I look at all the growth that's happened, all I can think of is the more debt we have. And when I, so when I think of growth, I think of debt. And that's not a corollary that a lot of people often think of, but it's interesting to possibly look at it in that context because the liability of constantly approving all these projects and constantly absorbing all these people, you've got to pay for that at some point down the road. So although the developer is fronting some money, the general public at some point gets to pick up the bill for some of this stuff. And I've just seen it. I can remember when bridge tolls were 25, 40 cents when I was little, and they're, what, seven, going to be $8 pretty soon? And so, you know, the tax rates are going up, and I'm just not happy with the way my state has transformed itself. So Concord's a pretty nice town. You guys have done pretty well. I grew up in Vallejo, city of Vallejo. They approved every single housing project that came down the pipeline. They approved, in my lifetime, at least since I graduated high school there in the 90s, probably about 20,000 homes they approved, and yet the city still went bankrupt. So I'm not a big fan of all the development that's gone on in the, in the Bay Area or in the state. The housing market's broken, so just building more homes isn't really going to solve the housing problem. This is really a population problem, and it has to do too with wages and other things like house flipping and foreign investment and LLC investment in housing and all that. So, you know, first-time home buyers really have a hard time competing with all this. So that's really my main concern. I like to see the United States return to a industry-based economy rather than a housing-based economy where we actually build things, cars, tools, machinery, but all that went bye-bye years ago. So I also have a concern too that when I graduated high school in 1990, the Gulf War happened, and that happened out of nowhere. And so I saw all the military installations just get frittered away here in the Bay Area.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you.
I have one more card, Mayor, from Hope Johnson.
Okay, Hope. Anyone else want to put a card in? Please do so.
Hope Johnson, Concord resident. I'm a little scattered because I'm trying to keep the things I have about the specific plan separate from the term sheet to try to keep it from being complicated. I live in Sun Terrace neighborhood, and I may be the biggest skeptic of developers in Concord, and I would like to say that Brookfield has dealt with us credibly and honestly, and that is coming from a big skeptic. So I appreciate their honesty. I don't have to agree. I just want them to be honest so we can assess it. I wanted to say that I really appreciate Mayor, Vice Mayor O'Brieger bringing up the financing. It's not sexy. It's not fun, but it's going to come up again and again. I appreciate that Brookfield said they have private equity to put up for it, but please keep asking because it could change at any time, and I am very skeptical that it will stay that way, and we should know if we're going to have taxpayer money on us. I also want to thank them for doing the Right-Away versus Fee title. As you know, Lennar refused to even admit that they could do the Right-Away, and it was a big bone of contention, and they were lying. And we don't have to deal with that anymore, so I do appreciate that they're willing to do that. I also would like to say that focus on the middle-to-low-income housing. People have been saying that $50 million isn't enough, and I just want to point out some specific numbers. When they say they're going to give $5 million in Phase 1, if there's 537 units, that's only $9,300 per unit. It's almost nothing compared to how much those units cost. So that is why people are concerned about the money. It sounds like we just want more millions, but per unit, we need to get those actually built, and that's, we need more money per unit, or we're going to be in the same boat we're in now. And lastly, I would like to advocate for a CAC. I know that there's going to be community outreach, but it's not the same as having a group of community people together. They don't understand certain things, like these phases are years and years and years apart. They start talking about them like they're, you know, 10 years apart when they're talking about something that's 30 years away. We learned from each other. We learned about the Navy and the cleanup, and without that, you're coming from a biased perspective instead of a group of people talking to each other about what is going on. And if the city isn't going to do one, I'm going to make sure that we do one, and I don't know how useful that will be for you guys. Thanks.
Thank you. Are you okay, Mr. Anonymous?
I have two things about-
Put the mic up. Thanks. There you go.
Two things about financing that I haven't heard brought up, but they came up when dealing with past developers. One was that residents didn't want any financing coming from EB5 visas. And then at one point, there was some talk of the campus district being funded by the Saudis, and then residents didn't want Saudi money involved in the financing, the campus district. So as far as green space, there's a green square in one of the dark purple squares, which to me looks like Omer Hill, if it is. I do appreciate that. I believe the trees on Omer Hill, from my research, are a minimum of 60 years old, but I actually believe them to be between 79 and 112 years old. The green space is for District 2, supposed to be 43% and 57 for District 1. I'd like to know how that compares with commercial space in District 1 versus District 2, and with the number of housing units in District 1 versus District 2. And, see, also, when we were here, I believe we were here in October, and Guy spoke about the wetlands on, on Olivera as being part of our green space, but what he didn't tell you was the week before, at the Navy RAB meeting, he said that they may not be wetlands in green space based on a Supreme Court decision, but then at the next, at the last RAB meeting, he, he said that the Navy had a lot of work to do for the wetlands, so I don't know if they're wetlands again or not. And also, I guess they found more contamination near the, near the runway. And then regarding a traffic study, previously speaking with Guy over the years, at one point, I asked about the widening of the roads, and he said, well, if they need to widen the roads, we'll just take the houses on Willow Pass Road, Olivera, and Port Chicago. My neighbors and I would like to know if we are possibly going to lose our homes or part of our properties. And when BART was extended down Port Chicago, the original plan was for BART to be four lanes and then with an alternating island and turn lane, but residents didn't like that, so it was kept two lanes. And he also said that the traffic study, a different traffic study, that it would be made as, to fit the existing roadways. So what's the point of an existing, of doing a traffic study when it sounds fraudulent?
We've got, thank you. And is that, anyone else want to rush the podium? Going once? Sold. All right. With that, we will bring it back to the council. I've got Dominic Galliano, then O'Brieger, then Hoffmeister.
Thank you, Mayor Prasan. I want to say thank you to staff and applicant Brookfield for their presentations. Thank you to my colleagues for the questions and comments and for the discussion, the public comment that was just made. I'm ready to move this forward. I'm ready to make a recommendation that we move staff's recommendation forward. But before I do that, I do want to address some of the concerns that were brought up by BART. Director, I hear your concerns. At some point, like I would like to have a further discussion, but at this point, I'm not willing to make those changes, but I'm willing to have that discussion as we proceed into the specific plan and progress later on in these phases. So at some point, willing to meet with you, staff, and Brookfield to further discuss.
Okay. With that, I have O'Brieger, then Hoffmeister, then Nakamura.
Thank you. So I do have some questions. I think I'll start with questions that were raised by the public that I would like to ask of Brookfield so we can get some clarification. So we had a concern about the only jobs being created would be building housing. So could you talk more about the long-term jobs, which I do share that concern, and I have talked about it for the past seven years, about having jobs beyond just constructing the project? So could you share with us what is envisioned currently?
Yes. It's actually one of the more exciting components. So we have the Innovation District, which is approximately 85 acres, is in the salmon-colored part, and it's Phase 2B. And then the Campus District is, could potentially have a number of education-related jobs in it. That's 120 acres. There's also all the jobs that are generated through the schools that would be built, as well as our commercial districts, neighborhood districts, and then, of course, near the TOD BART Center where we could have more of a typical commercial office-type buildings in that area. So I think as we've been exploring it, we've already been participating in some of the local organizations that do explore opportunities for job creation. DVTI has been a great outlet, East Bay Leadership Council, the Bay Area Council, and then our own company. We see a lot of opportunities to be able to build on the successes that we do have in the Bay Area. The Bay Area is a machine when it comes to new technologies, and so it's, it's great to have this opportunity to have open land to actually develop for commercial in what we would consider part of the more core Bay Area. So we do see a lot of opportunities for jobs and job creation that would be permanent after the construction is completed.
If I can add, on the original presentation by Guy, I believe you talk about 16,000-
300.
356 job creation. Okay. Coralin?
Thank you. Yes, I have more questions. Thank you. And for those who are not familiar, DVTI stands for Diablo Valley Tech Initiative. Okay, so the next question, are there any plans to fund the Campus District via Saudi money?
No.
Okay. Thank you. And how about, I think, I don't know, I can't remember the correct term. Is it EB5 visas? Is that, is that funding? Is there, is any of that kind of funding going to finance this project?
It's not intended to at this time, no.
Okay. All right. Well, we'll have to keep asking about that one. Could we get some information about, I believe it was the area that was the former airfield and whether or not it is wetlands? I think this is a question for Guy. I was not aware of the October RAB meeting. I was there for the February meeting, as was Councilmember Hoffmeister.
Correct.
So I didn't hear this issue, but could you clarify for us? Is it wetlands or not?
So there are two existing wetlands of significant size on the runway debris area or the old airfield.
And could you point that out?
The area on the map that looks like-
Thank you.
Excuse me. The area on the map that is not, well, oh.
You're a little-
There we go.
Great.
So these are wetlands. The plan, because of the way wetlands were previously delineated on the site, which means they were found, they were looked for, and other wetlands are on the site, and it was decided that they would be taken in the development, and we would move and build additional wetlands in the runway debris area to add to the existing wetlands. At the, one of the previous RAB meetings, it came up, because I pointed it out, that the Supreme Court of the United States has changed the definition of wetlands, and so many of the wetlands that we had previously identified on the site were no longer connected waters to the United States. So if we wanted to be really particular, we don't need to add any more wetlands. We just need to keep the ones we have. We haven't decided how we're going to pursue the wetlands question. We are reserving space, and we are deciding a strategy relative to whether we're going to add wetlands, protect the ones we have, what the strategy is, because the law of the land keeps shifting on us. And so we will do what is in the best interests of the project when that decision comes. So that's the explanation. I simply, in a previous meeting, explained that the definition of wetlands, according to the Supreme Court, changed, and so we now have to reevaluate our wetland strategy.
And just to clarify, that would be done at the specific plan process?
Yeah. It may be sooner, as part of that process, because we are going to be pursuing resource permits with the Army Corps and various things in parallel with each of those.
Coralin, you still have?
I still have questions, yes. And Guy, on that topic, so that, you know, I think it is important to clarify, not that you don't know this already, but since the original, the Concord reuse plan had that area zone for development, and then now it's identified as wetland, so it would be helpful to understand what it is.
Correct. The area plan showed a lot of development in that area.
Yes.
Right? We're not, Brookfield is not showing that as a potential development area because we haven't decided yet how many wetlands and what kind of wetlands are going to be preserved. There is also a Native American site in that same quadrant, and we need, we have already agreed with the State Historical Preservation Office that we're going to protect that site. So there is a certain symmetry to protecting that Native American site and the wetlands all in a spot that would allow classes and stuff to come see, schoolchildren to come see what a wetland is, right? Those sorts of things. So there's a number of things that will be under discussion in the specific plan process.
Okay. Thank you. And then my following question, so we had a question about comparing, well, yeah, District 1 and District 2. We heard about the green space, but also is there a comparison available around commercial and housing units that the developer can share? Just as, just as you had shown us, you had, you had done some percentages.
Yeah, the number of units is actually, the percentage of units is on there, so the percentages relate to the units.
Oh.
And the commercial space is, I think it's up, there it is.
On the PowerPoint. So this was on the Brookfield PowerPoint?
Yeah, it was. Oh, it's the other way. I'm sorry. Thanks, Guy. So the 47% is the, that's the land area and the percentage of the housing that's up there is, or I'm sorry, the area is 47%. And what we said is the residential units are within a percentage or two of that, or the number of residents. We calculated based on the generation rates that are in that term sheet exhibit. But we can get you the specifics. We did not calculate the amount of commercial, but I think we all know that the commercial is primarily up in the TOD area, and then the Campus District and the Innovation District, which aren't counted as part of that percentage, those two things.
Okay, so-
So we can get you that.
Yes, I would like to receive that, and then we will make that publicly available.
Yeah, happy to get that for you.
We will, we will put a summary together. It exists in Attachment 3. If you look at them by phases, it shows you housing units, commercial, square footage, jobs, and it's pretty easy to take the first three phases, which are primarily, but not exclusively, north of Willow Pass Road, and see that most of the jobs and most of the commercial is north of Willow Pass.
Okay, thank you. It would be helpful to have it broken down in the way that, that makes sense.
Or do you want it added together? You want?
Well, let's have a chart where we have commercial. Let's have a chart that has residential, and let's have green space.
Oh, I see. Okay.
For District 1 and 2, just so the average person who's becoming familiar with districts, you know, because this phasing, this is a whole other thing with the Naval Weapons Station. Okay, and then a question I had for Brookfield is, so again, it does relate to the traffic mitigation, and, and I do understand the real concerns of people who are adjacent to the Naval Weapons Station. Are there plans to, you know, take homes on Port Chicago, Willow Pass, that are, you know, by eminent domain to, in the, you know, to develop this project?
There are no plans at this point to do that. I can't imagine we would be doing that.
Okay. Okay. All right. Thank you. And then now, coming back to the BART issue, so I appreciate Director Foley being here this evening and BART, and Director Foley, you and I had had a, you know, kind of a conversation, I think like a month or two ago, so I was not aware of this, and I'm always happy, as you know, to talk with you. as you know, to talk with you, as the council member who represents that part of town. So, I just, I mean, could we get some more information, Guy, as term, in terms of the interaction with BART, and, and I was reviewing the letter included in public comment, and it seems like there was surprise? So, how often do we meet with BART? And, you know, because I would like to make sure, ideally, I think it makes sense for, for the BART property to be included in the specific plan, and I have been asking about that. So, I was under the impression that BART was still trying to make a decision, so can you talk with us more about your impression?
To my understanding, first of all, we did have a conversation, our staff, Brookfield, and BART staff, late December, early January, I forget precisely when, in which we discussed whether or not BART wanted to be included in the specific plan, and how we saw that happening, and BART said they would need to think about it. So, we left it that they would think about it. The two issues that BART has raised this evening, one is a misreading of the specific plan. Seventeen F, the page 17F at the bottom, is an aspirational comment to explain why we're not starting around the BART station. We will do stuff around the BART station in the specific plan, but Brookfield is breaking it up into reasonable phases, Phases 1, 2, and 3, or Phases 1 and 3, something like that, in order to make sure that we don't oversupply the market or underperform by trying to do too much around the BART station, and we need BART to decide what it wants to do, right? So, 17F is aspirational. If we want to take it out, I don't care. It was designed to explain our attitude around the TOD. It does not control what we do in the specific plan, so it doesn't have to be taken out. Page 24, the part they want stricken, is simply saying they don't want to pay their share of planning and infrastructure costs. And frankly, that's always been the deal, and if BART doesn't like that part of the deal, then they'll have to, we'll have further discussions, but that's, we would do that for any private property owner, and frankly, BART will never pay those dollars. BART will make it part of their project costs and have a private developer pay them. So, there's no reason to change the term sheet at all, and we will continue to work with BART and, and move the project forward based on direction that BART, or decisions that BART makes.
Okay, but I did want to go back to 17 to A, because it's talking about BART has to complete its own planning process and negotiate a DDA.
Well, if they are not in the specific plan of ICSP, they need to do their own planning process.
And I don't know that that language is clear, so, I just will state, okay, well, maybe it's not clear to me. So, it's clear now through this explanation, so, I think, I guess, what I'm just trying to say is, I'm open to continuing the conversation with BART. I would welcome BART being included in the specific plan, and let's, let's figure out a time to have that discussion after this meeting, so that, so that...
At whose cost?
Yes, yes.
So, we, we want, staff and Brookfield wants BART to be in the specific plan as well. We've communicated that to BART staff, so...
Okay. Okay. Well, we, we have BART folks here tonight, BART leadership, so you hear, we want to continue the conversation. I do, for the record, do feel, though, that BART should have some skin in the game and help to, you know, pay part of the cost of the redevelopment on their own property, so...
Is that it?
Give me one second, I just want to make sure. Yes, and I just want to ask, Councilmember Aliano, was that a motion that you made?
That is a motion.
Okay, okay. And what was your motion? Or, do we just have one, or did we have more?
I'll make a motion that we move forward, Item 2A, with staff's recommendation.
Okay, and I will second that motion. Thank you.
Okay. Hoffmeister, then Nakamura.
Yes, I could support the motion with one change, and I think that was to clarify that the word transitional housing is changed to supportive housing, which meets the intent.
Under our Rosenberg rules, they have to...
I'm asking, the maker of the motion would make that adjustment.
I would make that amendment to the motion, that we include that clarification.
And that's the second agreeing.
Absolutely.
Okay, so, make a note thereof, city clerk. Thank you. Anything else?
Yes, I do. First of all, I want to thank Brookfield Development. You can really see the difference in tone and tenor of our community today, this evening, in our council chambers, and I think it's a testament to all of your ongoing outreach that you've done with your team to different various community groups, interested citizens, interested parties, to meet with them, hear what their concerns are, get a chance to explain where you're coming from. So, this is a very delightful change in terms of seeing this process here this evening. I also, Guy, I think you said that you could do this somehow without it being included in the motion, but just clarify the financial disclosure summary as to what that means for the general public. And then, the other thing that I really am pleased about with this process is that they also have a community outreach program, and looking at various ways, whether it's meeting with Rotary groups, neighborhood groups, HOAs, interested community members, as well as formal meetings where people can come and kind of do workshop sessions on different aspects as you go into the specific planning process, because I think that's what everybody's done, tiring about all of this high-end stuff, and they're all wanting to get into the nitty-gritty details, as we keep hearing. So, I'm pleased with that. What I'd like to see, and Mr. Birkey, I'm not sure if it was planned in, was there, I'm sorry, it was Brookfield's PowerPoint, but if there's a spot for checking in with the city council as you go through those community outreach, did I miss it? As long as it's in there, okay, I was...
Once a quarter.
Once a quarter, okay, perfect. And so, I'm pleased with that, because I know we had mentioned that at one of the last meetings, so I appreciate that as well. You know, it's, it's great to hear the comments, and we're getting really into kind of some very fine, minute details this evening, and it's better to argue over the details and not over the whole big thing. So, I am supportive of the motion. I will say that, as we go forward in the specific plan, there are going to be some things that I'm going to be looking for that may or may not get my support at the end of the day, but I'm really thinking there still could be some adjustments made to the specific plan from, in the specific plan phase, from what you have is your conceptual plan, and I think that's just a starting point, and so, I'm looking forward to those community dialogues to see how more refinement can happen as we go along. The other thing that I'm going to put out there, because I happened to run into one of our community panel members from a long, long time ago, and it was brought up, that we had talked about at that time, when we get to the point, we go to street naming.
Oh, gosh.
The Port Chicago 50, we had mentioned that we would try to, you know, incorporate the names of the Port Chicago 50, if their names weren't already used in Concord, and try to incorporate some recognition of those that lost their lives there, as well as some remembrance of the Native Americans who are here and being culturally sensitive. So, I just leave that out there, as you get into, somebody said, "When do I get to talk about street naming?" And I said, "We're not there yet." But I'll bring it up, because I know it's been about 10:15 here since we mentioned that in this process. So, again, I appreciate all the work that you've done in going out and talking to our communities. I think it's a testament to the process that you want to engage with, with the city, as we've seen here this evening. Thank you very much, and we look, I look forward to working with you, as representing our community, and you with all of our community as we move forward, and I will be supporting the motion.
Okay. Nakamura.
Great. Thank you. I appreciate the street naming commentary from my council colleague here. I like the idea of naming it after the Port Chicago 50 and other people who have deep roots here. We have heard a lot tonight about the affordable housing and not having enough of it in the early stages, phases of the plan, and this may be for another conversation when we get into the specific plan, but I do want to, us to keep that in mind, that the affordable housing is something that we need sooner rather than later. And so, that's sort of a, am I correct in assuming that we will have time to move that, to work on how we might orient that, the affordable housing sooner?
To the extent that you're talking about expediting the number of affordable units, yes, but, because Brookfield has asked for the ability to move some of them around amongst the phases. So, in the specific plan, we will be setting pads and numbers of units by phase, and then making them, creating the process to make them available. We have to get through entitlement, so we'll have to get through that discussion, decide what the program looks like, and then, assuming we get to entitlement, we can then begin to implement it once the specific plan is decided upon. Yes, we can, we, there are limits to how they get moved.
But won't there also be options for the city to partner with the developer on applying for any new sources of affordable development?
Oh, absolutely.
And so, I think that, it's my expectation that the developer and the city is going to be on the lookout for those opportunities as well, which could, again, expedite more development of affordable housing.
The project has limited ability to support additional affordable housing. To the extent that we can partner with Brookfield and the affordable housing advocates to find other sources of revenue to make the affordable housing happen sooner or, or more efficiently, we will be doing that, absolutely.
Okay, great. And with that, I will be supporting this.
Okay. Carlin, you have one more comment?
Thank you. So, I just want to thank everybody who's here this evening, and I'm very thankful, because I've been at this process since January 2017, and I just, I appreciate, yes, there are people who are raising important constructive criticism, and thank you for that, and we will keep asking about the financing. You know, I will still keep advocating for equitable green space in North Concord, because there's no denying that there's going to be the bulk of the development and bulk of the impact, and I don't want to repeat the mistakes that we have in other parts of the community, so there's no excuse to do that. Forty-eight months, that seems like a really long time, so, the faster you can do it, I heard that you're motivated, I understand, as long as, you know, you're, you're still working on, you know, a specific plan and financing with the Navy, et cetera, that means that's money that is not being reinvested, so I think we're on the same page, it sounds like we're on the same page, to get this done faster than 48 months. I do want to raise, I hope that at some point, you know, in the not-so-distant future, that this council can revisit the campus concept. You know, we had had the Blue Ribbon Committee of 2019, we know what happened after that, but, you know, there is, you know, 150,000 that's included in the, made reference to on the term sheet, to market the Campus District, but we honestly, we need to know what in the heck we're marketing. So, I really hope that the council will be supportive at the appropriate time for us to, to take a fresh look at that, so that we have a better idea of what market conditions, you know, what is, what is an appropriate use for that, for that property. But again, thank you, everyone, for your patience, and third time's the charm, but again, we're going to be looking very closely, this is just the beginning, not the end, we have a lot of work to do, and I appreciate all of the community engagement to date, but again, that's why I asked, okay, great, I'm glad you're out there on March 2nd, that's fantastic, and the rain, I know that was a pretty miserable day, but the community always wants to be engaged here, that's what Concord does. So, I'm looking forward to continuing to work with you and to get this project going, and I will be supporting the motion.
Okay. With that, with that, I would make my few comments. Number one, on the whole naming thing, 12 years ago, Dan Helix had made the proposal that since this property, the U.S. War Department declared eminent domain and gave everyone between 30 and 60 days to get the hell off the land, and then, gave them fair market value in the middle of a world war for an area that was under attack. So, he suggested that we name a few streets after those kind people, and I would be remiss not to mention it, along with the other valuable names. As far as I'm concerned, as long as we're not naming anything after a Confederate general, I'm all for it. Okay. Other than that, I wanted to touch base on the nonprofit, the request that we make nonprofits a monopoly for the affordable housing. I'm opposed to that concept. I want affordable housing built, I don't care who does it. I don't like the idea of a monopoly on construction for non-affordable housing. I like the idea that our good friends at Brookfield are sticking their neck into the business. I think that's great. As for the idea of the amount of money that they put in, also, let me adjust the issue of putting things forward. We have 25% affordable housing in each phase, so that, by definition, that's going to spread it around the, the whole base development area, which I think addresses one of the concerns, that all the affordable housing is going to be in, you know, a single big project area. Coming from New York City, I know that doesn't work. I detest that concept. The amount of money that they put aside, well, there's a lot of things going on to support affordable housing, and there's a lot of money that's out there. The money that Brookfield is putting in is over and above the original requirement to provide for the pads, and I'm sure if they hit the lottery, we can, we can address that later. As for the other issue of BART, Mark, you're a good friend, the answer's no. People should understand that BART is trying to make money on its land, they are not selling the land, they are leasing it to the people that they will allow to develop it. Furthermore, under 2923, this, the wonderful Sacramento people decided that we, the city of Concord, your representatives, have no zoning rights over that land. They can put a thermonuclear power plant there if they want. Now, also remember that BART is going to be making money on this. The whole purpose of developing the land is so BART can make more money than the parking lot. So, therefore, I look forward to the concept of BART suddenly realizing that maybe they should contribute to the infrastructure so that they can make more money than the parking lot, because I know that all my good friends and Sun Terrorists, and each Sun Terrorist would basically prefer the parking lot and it all be a natural buffer zone. So, it's up to you, all right? I'm willing to work with you whatever we can in terms of doing what it is, but as far as I'm concerned, when I'm on the council, you're going to pay your fair share. The word "fair" is the operative word, and I look forward to my staff to approve that, to work with you, and quite frankly, up until this time, BART has been basically stonewalling us with what they're doing. So, hey, now's not the time to come to me here and say, "Oh, I don't want to do this." First, tell me what the hell you're going to do. All right. With that, I, of course, will be supporting the motion as enunciated by Dominic Aliano, seconded by Vice Mayor Obringer. With that, I'd like to call for the vote by our city clerk.
Councilmember Aliano.
Yes.
Councilmember Hoffmeister.
Yes.
Councilmember Nakamura.
Yes.
Vice Mayor Obringer.
Yes.
And Mayor Brison.
Yes. Okay. And with that, we are adjourned, but I will remind everyone, if anyone wanted to moan and groan about things not on the agenda, I'll be outside for a few minutes.